City manager call a roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
He'll be back in about two minutes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Sepper.
Here.
And Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Okay, first item is council comments. Any of my colleagues have comments? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to let people know that Pat Lovelace regrets that he's not able to be here tonight. As you know, he's usually here for all of our council sessions, but he continues to have back problems that keep him from coming tonight. I wanted to draw the attention of my colleagues of the paperwork that we got this week on the Tacoma Park overview. That's a new development project that's taking place on Plan Four on Geneva Avenue. There's a public hearing on July 14th at 7:00 PM, interestingly enough, at the Silver Spring Community Library to get neighborhood comments on the site plan, the preliminary site plan. It's disappointing that the development team didn't know enough about our community to realize that there is a community center and a park building that are both within walking distance of the neighborhood. Instead, they scheduled it for the Silver Spring Community Library. Nonetheless, I encourage community members to go to the public hearing on July 14th, that's this Thursday, at 7:00 PM at the Silver Spring Community Library at 8901 Colesville Road, and hear what the plans are for building residences on Geneva Avenue next to the church. The church is at 111 Geneva Avenue. I think they are trying to resubdivide the property so that instead of four lots, they'll have five lots and squeeze an extra house in there. And then lastly, last week, I thanked city staff and some other people for all their hard work, the Independence Day celebration this year, and on my way home, I recalled one group that worked very hard that I neglected to thank, and so I would like to take this opportunity to belatedly thank the Communications Department staff members for all their hard work on Independence Day. And that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Okay, let's see. I want to thank the city manager for working on this sort of longstanding issue on Ethan Allen Avenue. We have a particular property that needed some help, and that has been a long-going issue. It seems like moving forward with some help from our new code enforcement activities, and is that a lean and clean activity that's going on? I really appreciate that, and I think the neighbors in the area really appreciate that. While we're talking about Ethan Allen Avenue, it's not getting any better, and it's getting worse, so we really need to come up with a plan to deal with that street before winter comes and we go through another season with it like it is. It's in pretty terrible condition.
Yeah, I had a conversation with the Transportation Secretary a week and a half ago and waiting to hear back on the results of that.
Okay, great. And then the last thing is I had a meeting with a constituent who lives at the corner of Elm and Woodland at 500 Elm Avenue, and I asked him to submit a request to the Tacoma Park, as we call the Tacoma Park Action, what's the online? My TKPK, that's it. You can tell how often I use it. So, here's a stormwater issue. He has a curb cut along the Woodland Avenue side, and what happens is in the flood times, all the water runs down Woodland Avenue. It doesn't happen in a normal rain, but when we get like sort of a flash rain. Unfortunately, the bottom of the street, the street slopes slightly towards his property anyway, and then when the sidewalk was poured, there was a slight dip in the sidewalk as it comes across where his parking pad is on that side. It also has kind of a shallow curb, and so you put all those things together, and the water floods over the driveway apron and into his house. And what he told me is that he had a conversation with Public Works, and they were very helpful. The conversation was quite a while ago, and that they had said that they would put him on the list of people to come out and look at. And so, I don't know about the list, but somebody needs to probably go out and talk to him. I told him I didn't see much in terms of city liability for it, but, you know, they could help him strategize on solutions and make sure that he moves forward, as he moves forward, that we could work together to keep the water out of his property. That would be great. My last comment, and I'm going to borrow my blueberry jelly, is that the council members asked for more jelly, so my mother and Piper made blueberry jelly, and my mom went to the new hardware store, and she said it was great, and they have all kinds of terrific things and canning supplies. That's it for me.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you. First, I wanted to mention that there's going to be a very nice film here on Thursday, July 15th, which is this coming Thursday, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM in the auditorium. I think this will be the first screening of a movie here in the new auditorium, or was there one in that first week of events?
There was.
There was, okay. But it's, I'm sure, I haven't been to one yet, but I'm sure it's a much better experience than previous screenings here. The film is called Senior Mediation: A Family in Conflict or Care Plans for an Elderly Mother, and it's put on by the Conflict Resolution Center of Montgomery County in the city of Tacoma Park. It's a premiere. Our own Wolfgang Mergner is one of the producers of the film here in the audience. And following the event, there'll be a reception with food catered by the Capital City Cheesecake, one of our wonderful local businesses. And again, that's from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, Thursday, July 15th, 2010, here in the auditorium. I encourage people to come. I unfortunately will be having surgery that day, so I won't be here, but I would encourage people to come. The second thing I wanted to touch on, one is related to traffic or parking enforcement. So, there's been a number of complaints about the parking enforcement officer in some of the portions of Ward One. And so, the first thing I want to say is that the city manager, the chief of police, or myself, don't have any authority to override a ticket that the officer writes. That's only the ticketing officer's choice. I can understand that people get frustrated and are often unhappy when they get a ticket, and there could be situations where the officer, the ticketing officer, is not behaving correctly. And in those situations, if you feel that, I strongly encourage people to file a complaint with the chief of police, and he, I know, will investigate every complaint. And if there's a number of complaints, I'm sure that would be evidence of there being a problem. So, I would encourage people to take that course. Generally, I think he has been told that he needs to take a balanced approach to listening to people and informing the law in a way that it's intended to, the reason that it's intended to be imposed. And I encourage people, again, if they're unhappy with that, to file complaints with the chief. The second issue has to do with code enforcement of properties. I've had a fair number of complaints about people getting warnings, courtesy notices about peeling paint or upkeep on their property. The reality is that is in the Tacoma Park City Code. That is the way that we remind people that they need to do a good job of keeping their properties clean and well-maintained. And while that may seem frustrating at times, the city has a process, I think, is very flexible and helpful to homeowners. So, typically, what happens is you get first a courtesy notice, then you actually get a formal written warning. In both of those cases, the information to call the code enforcement people is on those notices, and you'd find that the code enforcement people are very flexible in giving you time to correct those violations, and even if there's hardships helping, people figure out ways to work through the hardship issues. And you can even formally apply for an extension. So, the reason I think this is important is because it's very hard for the city to know whether it's just that someone has forgotten to mow their lawn, or is, you know, a season behind in repainting their house, or if the house is going down the route of being like 36 Philadelphia. So, or what's the number of Sycamore?
7123.
7123 Sycamore, where the house becomes seriously dilapidated, becomes so expensive to repair that the owner becomes basically delinquent on the property, and now, actually, in the case of Philadelphia, we have the owner sitting in jail. I think he's still in jail because he hasn't signed the purchase agreement with someone who's actually going to buy the house and renovate it, and the owner then gets money if the house sells for more than a certain amount, if there's profit in the whole deal. So, that's the tough thing. I realize that might be frustrating to people, or people may think like, oh, my property could never have a violation. How could that be? Or why is the city doing this approach? Which I am sympathetic to, except that the fact that the city, I think, takes a very balanced approach and has a whole process by which you can have a conversation with them. It is definitely not a heavy-handed approach, and I would encourage anyone who gets a notice, has concern, to call up the housing code enforcement people and have a conversation about it. And again, they'll give you time to resolve the problem and work, if there is a hardship issue, help come up with a solution, so.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Councilmember Clay, for the blueberry jam. And please extend my appreciation to Piper. The grape jam's almost gone, so it's coming at a good time. There's a Pinecrest Neighborhood Association meeting tomorrow night at 7:30 at 6411 Orchard Avenue. Everybody in Pinecrest is hopeful come. I know they're going to talk about recycling and other issues there. And Chief, I see you're here. Thank you for being attentive on a number of items. The most recent is a noise complaint. It's not even in our city across the border. I appreciate your attentiveness and responsiveness on things like that. That's all.
Councilmember Schultz.
I guess I want to support what Councilmember Wright just talked about, because in the many years I've lived in Tacoma Park, I, in fact, did get a notice for a loose downspout. I thought, well, jeez, I was going to fix that. I just hadn't gotten around to it, you know? That was sort of like a year or two. And so, they got the notice, and so I thought, oh, well, better fix it. So, I did. And so, I think a lot of times, some of these things, like Councilmember Wright was saying, just catch us off guard, and we think maybe we're better than to have to deal with a notice. But the truth of the matter is, is that the code enforcement law is there to stem deterioration before it gets, as Councilmember Wright said, into a more serious problem. And just know, even though you may get irritated, that keeping up, doing whatever it is you have to do, is going to be appreciated by your neighbors, because some of your neighbors may be trying very hard to keep their property in place. And so, I think in the long run, it works out to be a fairly fair process when you consider that, except for the historic area of the city where there are a lot of covenants, most of the city is not in a historic area. And we can paint our houses all kinds of different colors and do all kinds of ingenious and clever things that we want to do to make our house represent who we are that live in it and own it. But there are certain limits. We need to respect them. I wasn't planning to say any of this, but it's just, I thought what Councilmember Wright's saying is important, and I'd like to back him up on it. The other thing I wanted to mention, actually, was that last week, Mayor Williams and myself and a member of our staff, head of the Department of Housing and Community Development, Sarah Daines, had a lengthy meeting with representatives of Walgreens from Chicago, who you may know is in the process of site preparation to build a new store on University Boulevard near New Hampshire Avenue. The folks in Ward Six, what I represent, are well aware of it. It was a very constructive meeting, and I think it was overdue. They agreed that it was an overdue meeting. I think that they, well, they did say that they took a lot of things away from what our comments were, and we talked about the future of that corner, which they own, pretty much. They own 10 acres. And they are, at this point in time, completely uncertain how they're going to develop, or if they're going to develop the remainder of that 10-acre site that isn't going to be the Walgreens store and associated parking and drive-through-window access. And the reasons for that is that the economy has been acting strange for the last couple of years. Makes things unpredictable. Property values have been uncertain. There's a lot of change, other changes that are coming to the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Center. And so, right now, any developer, not just Walgreens, would be inclined to be cautious about making firm plans that would be going several years out. But they are very interested in trying to maintain the shoppings, the stores that are there, to get vacancies occupied, and to do whatever they can to make the shopping experience there more beneficial to everybody, because it'll benefit Walgreens, it'll benefit the community, and it'll benefit the merchants. So, we basically agreed that the meeting was a great success, and that we were going to try very hard to maintain orderly communications going forward, not just for the development of the Walgreens store, but for the future of that whole quadrant of that New Hampshire University Boulevard intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schultz. I was going to mention that meeting as well. I thought it was an excellent meeting, and, as you say, overdue. Walgreens had had the impression that they mostly just had to deal with the county. It became very clear to them in that meeting that that was not the case. I would say that they got an appreciation for some of the efforts that the city can help with, in terms of what they might be able to do there, even as they wait to see what they might do with their long-range plans. It was clear that the city has been very successful in helping various locations apply for and receive grant monies from the state in participation in various programs that are available. And it was a, I think it was a real step forward with working with them, and the message to the local community, as was represented there as well, not just folks from Chicago, but also local Montgomery County folks, that the city wants quality economic redevelopment, and we're ready, willing, and able to work with whoever wants to do the same, that we can work with them, that we can bring various players to the table, various possibilities for state and county monies as they become available and make these projects go. I know Walgreens bought the property that they did, because they want to be there for the Purple Line and for the Bus Transit Center, and that whole Tacoma Langley area is an area that will see a lot of redevelopment over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. And it's an area where the city has a real stake in making sure that things happen well, they happen right, that transit gets linked through on the Purple Line and also all those bus routes, and connects to the metro, and hopefully makes some connections through our community that might result in something like a circulator or connector bus connecting those two nodes, and also brings about some real opportunities for local shopping to happen that will be an environmentally sustainable redevelopment, and will also bring increased tax revenues to the city, which will help us as we go forward with budgets in these tight times. So, I just wanted to also say that that was a very successful meeting and needed to be noted. Any other comments? Okay, then we will go next to a quick scheduling update. And I just wanted to note that next week, after our public hearing this evening on proposed changes to the state law regarding alcoholic beverage sales in Tacoma Park, we have scheduled a work session to discuss where we want to go with this, partly depending on what we hear at the public hearing this evening. And if we do want to go forward with a resolution and ask that of the state, then that is scheduled for our last meeting before we go on August recess. That meeting is Monday, the 26th. So, those items are on the next two meetings, if that's what we need to do. And the other items that are on that meeting on the 26th, we have tentative work session discussions of youth appointments to committees and discussion of vending in city facilities, and then we go on break for the month of August and come back for our first meeting Tuesday, the 7th, after Labor Day. And the scheduled item for that evening is a tentative discussion of the strategic plan. The next item is adoption of minutes. We have minutes before us for February 16th, February 22nd, March 1st, and March 8th. Would somebody like to move their action? Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are now at public comment period. For anybody who would like to speak on any item that is not the public hearing or is not on our regular meeting this evening, so if you have anything to say about our work session discussion or anything not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. And if you'd please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and keep your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I want to make sure that everyone in the community knows that County Councilmember George Leventhal will be holding a community meeting here in the Tacoma Park Community Center this Wednesday evening, July 14th, from 7:30 to 9:00 PM. It is a community forum where people can come express their concerns about county issues to Councilmember Leventhal and let him know what you think about issues. So, again, community forum with County Councilmember George Leventhal, who's running for reelection as an at-large county council member, this Wednesday evening, July 14th, 7:30 to 9:00 PM here in the Tacoma Park City Council Chambers Auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, that will close public comment period, and next we have city manager's comments.
Just a few brief items. Each year, the police department applies for funding from the U.S. Department of Justice, excuse me, and Captain Corsi manages that on behalf of the department. He asked if I would basically read a brief announcement, excuse me, regarding the public comment period. So, I'll just read directly what he gave me. The city is seeking funding from the U.S. Department of Justice under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program as allocated in the federal fiscal year 2010 cycle. Proposed uses of the funds will be continuation for 26 weeks of the part-time research and policy development position within the Tacoma Park Police Department. The position researches new procedures, equipment, tactics, and cutting-edge issues. The employee reviews existing policy and revises them as needed, as well as develops new policy and procedures for emerging issues affecting the agency. Funding amount, sawed-in this grant program is $14,132. There is a public comment period of 30 days prior to any obligation of payment under the program, and if anyone in the public has any comments to submit about the proposed use of funds, they should be submitted to Captain Edward Corsi of the Tacoma Park Police Department. There was also an announcement regarding this grant process in last week's status and information report. Also, just wanted to briefly update the council on the Public Works project. We are in the process of trying to obtain all the necessary permits if everything goes smoothly on that front, as well as working out the contract terms with the general contractor that the council had authorized me to execute a contract with. We hope to be able to start in early August. We'll certainly keep you updated as that process moves forward. One of the issues that was still outstanding was bid alternate number one. This was the renovation of the mechanic's quarters, and this was an item the council understandably had put on hold because of concerns about the lack of a contingency. I did talk to the principal for Coward Brothers. We are still working out some terms, but they were very amenable to giving us a period of time to make that decision. Right now, the timeframe that we're looking at is maybe 110 days from the start of the contract, which, based on the schedule, should allow us to get through a lot of the site work and get a sense if there's any soil problems or something of that nature. They also agreed to lower their price for that bid alternate. We'd like to try to continue talking to them and see if we can get a little bit more off the price, but they were willing to work with us on the pricing for that. The last item I had this evening is Chief Rucucci had asked if he could just have a few moments to update the council about some incidents that had happened last evening in the community.
Good evening. There'll be a community advisory put out later tonight, but I wanted to alert the public and alert the council. Sincerity Night, we've had five incidents where a suspect, and right now, in three of the incidents, it's just described as a blackmail in dark clothing. In these incidents, the subject, in one incident, which occurred last night, he inappropriately touched a woman as she went outside in the back of her house at approximately 1:00 in the morning. We had another incident where he entered a residence and stole the wallet. He was seen, but the person thought it was a member of her family and didn't report the incident until three hours later. We did recover her purse, but cash had been taken. In three of the incidents, the subject was spotted in the backyard lurking around the rear of a residence. We want to alert the public to be on the lookout, to please call immediately. We have developed a suspect. We detained the subject in DC, and it was found that the suspect was wanted in DC. He's being detained, and we are He's being detained, and we are looking at the suspect as we speak. But we want the public to get a positive ID and are able to make arrests and be alert. It's very alarming, obviously, when we have someone that will come into houses at night, so we remind the public to lock their doors, keep their windows shut, and be on the alert. If they hear anything, immediately call. We got some real good calls. We were able to get some good tracks last night. We just didn't get the subject. We're hoping that the subject that was detained earlier this morning will prove to be the subject. He does meet the description, and we're kind of confident at this point, but there's a lot more work to do until we've got an arrest. We want the public to be on the alert. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chief. Okay. That's it for the city manager's comments, so we will now move to the public hearing. And this is a public hearing on proposed changes to the state law regarding alcohol beverage sales in Tacoma Park, sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. And there was a sign-up sheet over there, and I'm assuming we have some people who wish to speak. We'll take the people who signed the sign-up sheet first, and anybody else who wishes to speak will also have a chance to do so. So, the first on the list is Paul Dastasio, and he will be followed by Jeff Trunzo and Robert Lanza.
Good evening, for the record. My name is Paul Dastasio, 19 Pine Avenue. It's been a few years and quite a few dollars since I was in this chamber, sitting on the other side. I trust that it lasts. I'm here to absolutely, unalterably oppose changing the alcohol rules that govern the city of Tacoma Park. I don't think there's much issue or much contention that off-premises alcohol sales bring trash, they bring traffic, they bring people hanging out, they bring underage sales, they bring a whole raft of problems. You only need to stand outside the liquor store on the other side of the metro on a Saturday night and think, do I really want that up on Carroll Avenue? We say, oh, well, you know, Montgomery County is going to control all of these problems. And we know, of course, how reliable a partner Montgomery County is. I'm not going to take a poll in the council and ask you to raise your hand if anybody thinks that we can rely on Montgomery County to give us the money that we're due. I'm not even sure we can rely on them to show up when we call the dog catcher. In fact, last time I called the dog catcher, he showed up at my door three days later. We're simply asking for trouble, ladies and gentlemen. I don't see, at one point, perhaps 12 months, 18 months ago, we were wringing our hands. We saw a lot of empty storefronts up on Carroll Avenue. Since that time, clearly, the Cheesecake Factory has come in, the hardware stores have come in, Everyday Gourmet is busy renovating, and obviously, the owner up there seems to think it's worthwhile putting money into Tacoma Park. Roscoe's Restaurant has opened up. There may be an empty storefront up there, but I'm not quite sure where it is. If our justification for inviting the whole raft of uncontrollable problems into the city of Tacoma Park is that we need the economic development, I'm missing it. I'm missing it. I've been in business 35 years. I've been in this city, not quite that many, but 30 years. And I just don't see any call. I don't see any need. I don't see why we want to bring those problems into the city when we simply have no means other than, you know, we can call the chief and have the chief chase the kids down the street. But beyond that, I'm not sure, I know, I'm sure that we can't rely on Montgomery County, and I'm not sure what other benefits we want to bring for this into the city of Tacoma Park. I'm probably going to run over my time. I apologize here. Finally, let's bear in mind that this is not likely to be a chic little wine store. First of all, this is Montgomery County, and it's a control. It's controlled by the county, and you're not going to get anything at that liquor store that you can't buy at any other package store in Montgomery County. But you can go across the line into the district and get anything you want. So, I'm not sure that we're even bringing a good business case into Tacoma Park. I'll stop. I won't run too far past. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thanks for your comments, and we're glad to see you back here after a long absence.
This is without count.
Next is Jeff Trunzo.
Jeff, you can lift that entire thing on the right-hand side.
Hit the button.
There you go. We've got to share that thing on from time to time.
This is almost like a country club. I love it.
My name is Jeff Trunzo, 119 Sherman Avenue. Prior to initiating any change to the state's alcohol beverage laws that apply to Tacoma Park, there should be a clear, concise, and rational goal about why the change will benefit the community and that any proposed change will do no harm. At present, there is no evidence that changing the status quo will improve residents' quality of life or the commercial business environment. Our current system of alcohol sales is serving the community very well. There are alcohol sale establishments ringing the entire perimeter of the city. All of them are walkable from much of the city. Some of the establishments could be considered to be high-volume. None of them would be considered a community amenity. The appearance of their buildings, their interiors, their facades, their involvement in support of their immediate neighborhoods, the Tacoma community at large, nor the citizens who are impacted by their presence. Quite the opposite. All of these businesses are characterized by nuisances such as littering, loitering, solicitation, adjacent urban blight, horrendous aesthetics, neglected maintenance, graffiti, and attention to facades, window sign in their immediate sidewalks, overall disinvestment in the community, and in some areas create periodic law enforcement interactions. I urge the council to resist any change to the current alcohol beverage laws. With due respect to those longstanding businesses in Tacoma that contribute to and honor to the community, as well as to the new businesses that show great promise to be long-term contributors to Tacoma's quality of life, there is no evidence that our other businesses, which would become eligible to sell alcohol, possess or would obtain the management expertise to execute a sales strategy that would benefit the Tacoma community in any way. In all likelihood, a change to the law will financially benefit business and property owners who live in other communities, while Tacoma Park will be burdened with most of the costs of these incremental sales increases. Changing the law would place a terrible additional burden on the neighborhoods adjacent to blighted commercial areas. Past and recent progress addressing blight would be reversed, and any future efforts to redevelop these areas into better-quality commercial districts could be blunted by the presence of these establishments. The city does not possess the resources to address the magnitude of our current commercial blight situations. Do not add responsibilities to an overburdened, underfunded, and shrinking city government. Do not add to the burden of the collateral impacts of alcohol sales to our neighborhoods. Please do not change the alcohol sales law.
Thank you. Next is Robert Lanza, and he'll be followed by Chrysanthemum Rice and Cyrus Namadi.
You can lower it with the switch there.
Sorry.
Thank you. Yes, Robert Lanza, 721 Fishtower Avenue. I'm also here today to oppose any change to the alcohol law in Tacoma Park. The way I read all of these options, Montgomery County would control the licensing of these off-site establishments. My view in general is that those sorts of decisions should be made here in this room, if they're going to be made at all, not at a licensing board in Rockville. So, first off, the previous speakers eloquently explained the potential downsides of any change to the Montgomery County law, the state law, also pointed out that, you know, Montgomery County is not totally reliable in terms of licensing or of anything. So, that being the case, I don't see the need, and I also don't see where Tacoma Park would be able to control the licensing or respond to any of the downsides that this would provide. I agree that, you know, once this door opens, a lot of people might run through it, and they might not be the people that we here in this room would find desirable to run through it. So, in that case, first, consider what you're doing, consider the downsides, and I think the most appropriate decision on your part would be to provide no change to the law whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chrysanthemum Rice.
I actually signed up by accident. I saw that people were writing down their names, and I figured it was a mailing list of some sort, and so I put my name down. But since I am here, I'll mention the two most prominent points in my mind, one being the amount of money that we might bring in by having establishments like this. Is that really going to balance out the amount of money we have to spend dealing with all the problems? And again, since I'm not prepared, my second point is a fluffy one, which is, when I think of Tacoma Park and what makes it special, yes, it's fluffy, I think of things like the vintage dress shops, or I think of Mark's Kitchen, which has been around forever. I think of the Savory, which unfortunately is no longer around. I think of goofy houses with ridiculous lawn ornaments. I don't think of Subway, and I don't think of liquor stores. It's not something that makes Tacoma Park unique. Do we really need it? Is it something that benefits us? What does it do for Tacoma Park? Thanks.
Thank you. Cyrus Namadi, followed by Seth Grimes and Laurie Shakudian.
Good evening. I'm Cyrus Namadi of 806 Houston Avenue in Ward 5. I've lived in Tacoma Park for about a year and a half, and one of the reasons that brought me here is Tacoma Park does have sort of a unique image where everything is a unique store. Even the Ace Hardware coming in seems to understand that it has to be part of Tacoma to be acceptable. I think with liquor stores coming into the city, it certainly brings in undesirable element. It doesn't really fit in with the city. As was said before, I don't think it's going to be anything like fine bars. So, I think we just have to be aware of what brings people into the city. I mean, I certainly can't afford to live in Tacoma Park. I only can by a stroke of luck, by finding rent that's low enough. But I would love to own a place in Tacoma Park eventually, and it's that sort of image that I want to keep in the city and hopefully keep bringing other people into the city. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Seth Grimes.
Try the other setting. Good evening. Seth Grimes, 730 Willow Avenue. I apologize for forgetting to identify myself earlier. So, I've lived in Tacoma Park for going on 14 years now. I am a property owner here. I own and run a business here in Tacoma Park, and as you know, I'm involved in community activities and city government, so, in my own way. So, I'm speaking from four perspectives. First perspective, as a shopper, I will agree with Mr. Dastasio earlier that Tacoma Park, and Mr. Trunzo, that Tacoma Park does not lack for opportunities to buy alcoholic beverages nearby. That can include in Old Tacoma, near Tacoma Langley Crossroads, along Flower Avenue, at Piney Branch Road, along New Hampshire Avenue. There's no lack of access to alcoholic beverages here in Tacoma Park. Speaking as a resident, I, and one who lives within a block and a half of the commercial district and who operates a business in one of our commercial districts, I don't see any evidence that having alcohol sales here would, in fact, degrade the commercial or environment or the livability in Tacoma Park. This is simply not a fear that I have. Speaking from a third perspective, as a Tacoma Park advocate, I do favor the change in state law to allow the sales of alcohol here because I know that some of our businesses want it, in particular, the TPSS Co-op, and there could be other businesses that do have a Tacoma Park character that would operate in accordance to that Tacoma Park character. The TPSS Co-op in particular has talked about selling organic beers and wines. Well, are these things I would buy? Not necessarily, but I think that there is a market here, and that there is a market here is a point to be made. I consume alcoholic beverages. I don't know about you or the other people in this room. Alcoholic beverages are not antithetical to the Tacoma Park images. Why should sales of them be here? The fourth perspective, the city government perspective, we all recognize the revenues to be realized from sales of alcoholic beverages here. We do not currently share in-state sales taxes and all of that kind of stuff, but we do get personal property taxes from businesses, including their inventories. There is a potentially significant amount of revenue to be realized by having alcoholic beverage sales here in Tacoma Park. So, weighing my four perspectives, as a resident, as a shopper, as a Tacoma Park advocate, and as someone concerned with the city government, I will say that I am in favor of changing Tacoma Park law to allow sales of alcoholic beverages in stores here in Tacoma Park. I do recognize that the council needs to very carefully weigh how any law would be crafted within the boundaries that state law allows, and I am sure that you will take into consideration all the views that you have heard and all the concerns, and do sufficient research and planning to properly implement this if you go forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Laurie Shakudian.
Can I just make this go up and down for fun for a little bit?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Laurie Shakudian. I live at 425 Ethan Allen, but I'm here actually speaking as president of the Co-op, not as my own opinion. And I just wanted to share that when we did the strategic planning process at the Co-op a few years ago, we did extensive input gathering from members, and one of the things that the members expressed was an interest in seeing the sales of organic and biodynamic wines, beers, and also locally-produced wines and beers. Part of the mission of the Co-op is to support the development of local and regional economies, and so, to the extent that the Co-op could kind of have a unique niche in selling locally-produced wines from the region as well as beers, we would be interested in exploring that. I do need to say that the Co-op hasn't done our own business analysis, and so there's not a commitment that we're making today or not yet that we would definitely sell those items. But there's definitely an interest among members and, as reflected in our strategic plan, and an interest in exploring it. I think when I spoke at the workshop that was held earlier, I had asked about if the council was to move forward with this. It would be our hope that it would be possible through the Montgomery County purchasing system to go directly to or through that system to be able to purchase from the regional producers of beer and wine, because a real strength and a real interest of ours is to support the local economy. So, that's the Co-op's interest. Again, not a firm commitment to go in that direction, but certainly an interest in being able to explore it, and just wanted to add that perspective of the ability to provide items produced in an environmentally and locally sustainable way, that that might be something that certainly is not available currently in the businesses that surround Tacoma Park.
Thank you. No more people signed up on the sign-up sheet. Is there anybody else who hasn't testified who would like to testify? If so, come forward. Let me note that we received some comments by email from the city clerk. The council has a copy of those, and those comments are entered into the record as well. And we're certainly happy to hear from anybody else. Councilmember Seaman.
How long will the record remain open?
The record can remain open the rest of this week.
About to the end of the month?
Well, we're going to have a work session next week, and then if we're going to go forward with this, we would go forward with it. It's anticipated we would go forward with it. At our July 26 meeting, we're on recess in August, and if we're going to go forward, we have to have something to take to the delegation in September. So, I guess I would say, yeah, I think the end of the week is reasonable for the public hearing record.
Suzie, you had a comment?
So, I close the business on this Friday. And if I can just also point out for folks who may be here for the first time, just a reminder that the renovation of these chambers was done without any general fund monies. It was all done with what I like to call other people's money, and we have a little fun with the raising and lowering of the podium there, but a reminder that that is because of a requirement for Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. So, it's not just something that is a little torn. with Disabilities Act compliance. So, it's not just something that is a little toy, but it's needed for that compliance. So, I call this public hearing to a close. Thank you all very much. We'll now move on to the regular meeting agenda, and the first item is a first reading ordinance authorizing issue of City of Tacoma Park General Obligation Bond for renovation of the public works facility.
Would you like to move it?
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Simmons, seconded by Councilmember Sniper. Does the city manager have any comments on this?
Yes, I'll just give a brief overview. Obviously, the council has fairly detailed information in front of it, but for anyone in the public who is watching, as the council is aware, we retained a financial advisory firm, Davenport Company, to issue a request for proposals on behalf of the city for financing for the public works renovation. In response to that request for proposal, there were proposals received from five separate financial institutions. Of those five, four actually submitted both a tax-exempt as well as a taxable bond proposal reflecting the Build America Bond option. Included in the packet is sort of a fairly detailed analysis, but we had narrowed down the—those under consideration to the Bank of America Build America Bond option, as well as both the taxable and tax-exempt options from BB&amp;T. As indicated in the agenda cover sheet, the Build America Bond proposal of Bank of America actually offered the lowest net debt service cost to the city. However, Bank of America did include some language in its proposal. It's kind of hard to explain simply, but it's referred to as Make Whole Yield Protection language. And what essentially that means is it gives them an out if there is any change in federal or state tax law that might change the dynamics of their bond proposal. Clearly, there's a lot of discussion going on, particularly at the federal level, about the federal tax code. This was something that was actually not allowed in the RFP itself, and certainly it was the opinion of Davenport as well as your own city staff that accepting a bond proposal under those terms basically—almost essentially is not a fixed interest rate. It just leaves you subject to some variation. So, we mutually agreed that we would discount that and narrowed our focus to the two proposals of BB&amp;T Bank. Very negligible difference over the course of the 10 years in terms of the cost of both those proposals. It came out to about $1,600. Davenport Company recommended the tax-exempt option even though there was a slightly higher cost. There are some specific provisions in terms of filings that are required under the Build America Bond option. And while it's not onerous, we obviously have a very small staff, and there's also the risk that some things in the Build America Bond program may change over the course of the 10 years. So, given the minimal cost difference, it is a recommendation of the staff this evening that the council accept for first reading the tax-exempt bond option or bond bid submitted by BB&amp;T Bank. Very pleased with the interest rates that we got, and I think which is reflective of the market. Their 10-year fixed rate of 2.97 percent. We had included in the FY11 budget $185,000 for debt service for this bond issue. The cost based on the bid of BB&amp;T would be $164,352.50. So, if the council has any questions, certainly we'd be happy to answer them.
If you can just take a minute, and if you recall the structure of what was being talked about when we first talked about the bond for this, and we were gonna go through the state bond pool and the costs that we anticipated to be associated with that, anything that you can do to compare that one with this one? We've moved on. We know that this is the process that we want to use and need to use, but I just want to circle back and kind of touch base with—with that process, which is where we started and where we had the original expectations.
Yeah, and it's been a little bit of a bumpy road. When we first started talking about financing for the project, we had intended to participate in the State of Maryland Local Government Infrastructure Financing Program. We had not yet accepted bids for the public works project, and so we had advertised in that public hearing that I believe happened earlier this calendar year for a not-to-exceed amount of $3 million. As we've discussed over a series of meetings, the state process sort of ran into a few hurdles. The bond insurance market, which they have relied upon for many years, essentially you buy bond insurance and you get a AAA rating, is what it equates to, basically dissipated in terms of all the, you know, meltdown of the financial markets, and that forced the state to actually go through the typical rating process, which is extremely complicated even in and of itself. And the state process, because it is a housing department basically securing—financing for infrastructure projects of local government, it's sort of an odd animal, and the bond markets don't really know quite what to do with it. So, they spent a lot of time trying to work their way through that. As far as I know, I have not checked since we made the decision to—to secure financing in an alternative manner. They are scheduled, if things were going well, to basically wrap up their process sometime by the end of August. The ordinance that the council passed earlier this year—and I apologize, Mayor Williams, I'm going off memory—but I believe it had kind of an interest rate cushion, if you will, because we weren't quite sure where they would end up, given the timing that was involved. I believe it was around 3.3 percent. The other thing that changed was through our own budget process for FY11. We had started out assuming we would bond $2 million, and then in the final days of the budget process for FY11, particularly with the cutbacks by the county, one of the things that I had recommended to this council was using more cash reserves and bonding less to essentially save on debt service payments. So, we ended up only borrowing $1.5 million. So, I think we're in pretty good shape. We had gone back and looked at some of the schedules from the state in terms of making that change towards the end of the budget process. That's where the $185,000 figure came from. Obviously, we were successful in getting interest rates that were less than that, and basically cutting the debt service payment for this fiscal year by about $20,000.
So, we had various reasons for doing this, and in the process, we didn't necessarily increase our cost?
No. Actually, I think by borrowing less and I think being able to be in a position to move ahead, I think it's actually benefited us.
Okay. Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Bob, you had said—remind me again about how long we expect the construction process to take, assuming you mentioned it might start in early August.
We're expecting about a 12-month schedule.
About a 12-month schedule. Okay. Then, that leads to this question, and that is, is that we will have two pots of money. One from our cash, and the other from the proceeds of this bond. Since this is not a construction line of credit, but a lump sum loan that the city will receive this money from the bank—
Right.
—as of the date of the closing on the bond. Does—and this is an open-ended question. I'm not trying to lead you anywhere on it. Does it make any difference whether we spend the bond money first into this project, or whether we take money out of cash to do this? Because it might be that—we're gonna pay the same interest no matter whether we spend it or not, but we are earning, I presume, some interest on the money that we have invested, the cash. So, I'm just curious if you know what that—
It's a fair question, Councilmember Schultz. And I—there are actually federal tax laws that will deal with that situation. You may be familiar with the term arbitrage provisions, which is basically that you don't borrow and earn a certain rate of return essentially on bond proceeds. And there are, by federal tax law, time periods where you're having to draw down money so you don't accumulate a lot of investment earnings. Unfortunately, as you may recall from the budget process, your own personal savings or money market account, no one's earning much of anything on investments these days. So, I don't think arbitrage is even a consideration, given the short construction timeframe and the minimal amount of interest that you can earn. I've not yet talked to Ms. Brooks about it. My guess is we would probably just spend down the bond proceeds and then tap the city's cash. There are—in addition to the actual construction cost, there are costs that we will incur associated with the construction management service, the architect. Those are being paid for with cash as well. And some other proposals that we had received, particularly Bank of America's, as well as the state process that Mayor Williams referred to, sometimes hold the funds themselves, and you actually have to draw down the proceeds. One of Bank of America's requirements is that the city would hold the funds in their financial institution, which is not a depository bank, and we would have to essentially do drawdowns, which is also what the state requires. That's not the way most of our bond issues have worked, and we just take the cash and spend it down. I don't know if I've answered your question, but—
Yes, I think you have.
Okay.
Good enough for now, in any case.
Okay. If you have any other questions, let me know.
Councilmember Wright.
So, it's interesting. Just wanted to make sure I understand this. The subsidized bond, the Build America Bond, is only slightly cheaper, even with that 35 percent subsidy, only slightly cheaper. That's interesting. It sounds like we're going with BB&amp;T, but I'm just curious whether we know whether Bank of America or BB&amp;T has more foreclosed properties in Tacoma Park. I wouldn't expect that you would go do that research, but if we knew from any of the reports we got from the county anyway?
No, that was not a factor that we looked at.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this first reading ordinance? Okay. I think then we're ready to vote. All those in favor of this first reading ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on our agenda is a first reading ordinance approving the FY11 Ask Me Pay Plan. Would somebody like to move that ordinance?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Sniper, seconded by Councilmember Clay. City manager wanna— or does the deputy city manager want to speak on this one?
Sure. In front of you, actually, are three different pay scales, three ordinances, all related to the pay scale system for city employees. The—as you know, in adopting the budget, there's no wage increases for the coming year. With Ask Me, we have signed a memorandum of agreement, not for no wage increase, for FY11, and the adoption of this ordinance keeps the pay scale, and it reflects no wage increase.
And just remind us, in terms of what was in the contract that we were operating under up to this point, where it had a floor of 3 percent, and we are now operating on an extension of that agreement?
Well, we're in negotiations with Ask Me right now. The past contract, which expired June 30th, did have an annual market adjustment or a floor of 3 percent increase. The—we're right now are not working really on an extension. We're simply having this agreement that says that we continue to negotiate, but for the purposes of the wage—wages that there will be no increase. And there was also an agreement on allowing us to go forward with health insurance.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any council questions or comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next is first reading ordinance adopting FY11 Management and Non-Union Staff Pay Plan. I'm assuming the comments are basically the same.
We're not negotiating.
No, no.
No, basically, it just simply continues the same pay scale structure and no wage increase.
Okay. Any council comments? Any public comment?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Sniper. Council comments? Public comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And first reading ordinance adopting FY11 Police Pay Plan. Who would like to introduce it?
Me, well.
Second.
I think Councilmember Sniper introduced, and Councilmember Schultz, second.
On this one, just to—we are not in negotiations with Local 400. They do have a provision that talks about the same kind of market adjustment and 3 percent floor. They also do have a provision, however, in their contract about what happens when there's severe fiscal constraints. We discussed this pursuant to that provision of the contract, and we've also agreed to no wage increase for the coming year.
Okay. Any council questions? Any public comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes. Yes? Sniper and Schultz. We now move to a single reading ordinance authorizing city manager to sign an amended agreement with ACS for the placement of two additional speed cameras. City manager.
Yes, I'll kind of give the highlights if there's any more technical questions. Chief Ricucci and Austin Malarki are in the audience. We installed four stationary photo radar units or speed cameras, as we commonly refer to them, in the spring of 2009. Two of those are on New Hampshire Avenue, and two are located on Ethan Allen Avenue. In consultation with the police department, the speed camera program vendor, ACS State and Local Solutions, recently conducted speed surveys in two additional locations in the city. One is at East-West Highway, as well as University Boulevard. And included in the council's agenda packet are the results of the speed surveys that were conducted by ACS. Just as a reminder, there is not a violation unless you're 12 miles or more over the speed limit. That'll give you some idea of how fast you have to be going before it counts as a violation. We had also gathered some information about accidents in these general locations. I believe Councilmember Simmons had requested that. So, included in the packet is also accident statistics since October of 2009, and we also included some data regarding feedback from our traffic officer about the number of tickets that she has written in these locations. Based on the speed surveys, the accident data, and just our own staff's experience in issuing tickets, staff is recommending this evening that the council authorize the installation of two additional photo radar units or speed cameras. One would be in the 1,000 Block of University, the other in the 1,000 Block of East-West Highway. I know there was some concern or some confusion about where the city boundaries were and where these cameras would be placed, as well as their proximity to the existing cameras in some cases. And we have included in the agenda packet a map showing the locations of the four existing cameras and where we would anticipate the other new cameras, if authorized by the council, would be installed. Both the locations are under the jurisdiction of the State Highway Administration. We would need to get their approval to put the cameras in state right of way. And the ordinance that is before the council this evening, if approved, would authorize staff to proceed with seeking that permission from SHA. The camera that would be on University Boulevard would be portable, whereas the one on East-West Highway would be a stationary fixed unit like we currently have. We have included in the agenda packet kind of a depiction of what a portable camera would look like. Just to give you a sense of how that might differ, it is smaller in size than the stationary fixed cameras. And Chief or Austin Malarki, did I miss anything?
So, the picture we have here is of the portable unit?
That would be of the portable unit. One of our employees, our model, as we jokingly call her, is standing next to it. She is 5'7".
Okay. And this is portable in the sense that it's not as permanent as the permanent one, but it's not the kind of thing that you just put out there for a day and take away?
Right.
It's installed.
It is installed. It is not—I know when we first talked about this several years ago, for those councilmembers who were here, there is also a—I'm not gonna show you the use of the right terminology, sort of a mobile van-type setup, which requires an employee to be actually in the van. There are still the same requirements, as I understand it, in terms of signage and things of that nature. We have not, to date, recommended kind of the mobile van, just because of the additional equipment cost and staffing that is required with that type of setup. So, it's portable, but it is kind of locked down and installed.
And this portable one, looking at the pictures, it looks like it has a cord that plugs it into the lamp. Is that the case? Like, somebody can come along and snip the cord or unplug it or something?
Two-inch length conduit.
The picture that you're looking at, I believe, that is actually a security mechanism. It's just basically secured to a fixed pole to—
Okay.
—try to alleviate any kind of damage or theft of the box.
Okay. So, the power comes up through those—
The power is actually—it's completely self-contained.
Self-contained, okay.
It's powered by marine batteries, like a car battery, that need to be replaced about every 10 to 12 hours.
Every 10 to 12 hours?
Every 10 to 12 hours? Yes, correct.
Wow. So, twice a day, someone goes to this thing and replaces the batteries?
From ACS, that would be—that would—
They do all that?
Yes, sir.
Wow. That's kind of amazing. That's kind of amazing.
Councilmember Siemens.
And what does this cost? What does ACS charge us for this one?
I think the installation is actually done at their expense, and then there is a cost sharing between any revenue that is generated by the tickets. I would note that the tickets are reviewed, must be reviewed by a city police officer and sent off on by a city police officer.
I know I was, I've been approached by another vendor who's interested in participating in the installation of speed cameras in Tacoma Park. When we first went out with speed cameras, we chose, I think, piggyback on the county's contract. Have we considered recompeting the contract?
We believe we have an excellent relationship with ACS, and we've been able to negotiate very favorable conditions for the current contract, especially when they took over the processing of tickets. We have continued that relationship. There is no cost to us in putting up the new pole and the new stuff. We have the same exactly contractual agreement we had on how much money they get and how much money we get. We believe it's in the best interest of the city to continue this contract at this time.
And have the legal concerns been resolved? I know there was a lawsuit in Montgomery County.
The lawsuit has been dismissed and ruled in favor of the jurisdictions.
Okay. And then I would just lastly say that I had asked for the accident statistics, because I know there's, there are many people in the community who fear that we install these speed cameras as a revenue generator. And I think the accident statistics clearly show, and the ticket statistics clearly show that at this location, we're installing these cameras for safety measure, not as a mere revenue generator.
That is correct.
And if I can just point out that on the East West Highway speed survey results, there were days when almost half the cars would have gotten tickets, which is pretty high.
And what speed will these cameras be set for on East West Highway? Do you know what speeds the cameras will be set to?
Same as all of them, you have to be 12 over that state law.
Yeah, the speed limit is 30 miles an hour, so a violation would be 42.
Thank you.
Did the city manager have something you want to say?
Yes, I think the city clerk is sharing that she's very bummed. She had actually done a lovely job on the mapping in your package, showing the locations of the current cameras, as well as-
They didn't show up.
And they did not show up, and we just realized that. So it is available online, for those of you who have laptops. But something got lost, apparently, in translation when it was being printed out. We will get a new map, too.
Okay, I think we, maybe, some of us are familiar with where those are located.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes, one question I have is, what is the, or why are we choosing to put in a portable unit on University Boulevard as opposed to the units we've already, you know, the, I guess, what, for lack of a better term, the permanent units? I call it, there must be some advantage in your mind, I'm just curious.
We felt the fixed would work much better on East West, because the nature of that location is a very heavily traveled area. Our vendor wanted us to try a portable, to see how it works. Obviously, the portable's a little bit less expensive. The location I'm most concerned with, both of them aren't concerned, but the one where we have the most violations is obviously the one on East West and where the accidents are, which has been our target area, that in that area on New Hampshire, and on East West and going into Ethan Allen. And, because what basically is, it's like a speedway into the city. And the worst part is they try to beat the light. And when we identified this spot, our traffic officer, it's a serious situation there. The University Boulevard has continued to be a problem, as you know, with pedestrians and a lot of the things we've done down there. We were surprised at the statistics, because we looked at that area three years ago, and it didn't meet our, what we considered the threshold for looking at it. So we're under the, we may be able to slow people down there, and it may be in the best advantage to the city and to the contractor to move it on. But we've never tried a portable before. We're going to try there. It may come where if the portable, because there is some issues. The 12-hour thing is a concern to us. Will the vendor be able to, as you asked, change it every 12 hours? And we want to see how it works and how our vendor works with it. We may go to a fixed pole at a certain point, but we're going to experiment with that one. Since we don't have one, the county and Rockville City, which we basically copy after, we've learned a lot from them, use a lot of them and have found to be successful, so we're going to try it out.
Okay. Councilmember Clay.
All right, I confused myself. I thought that they were both going to be the portables, but I just heard you say one's going to be portable and one's going to be fixed. And the one that's fixed is the East West Highway one?
Correct.
That is correct. I think Councilmember Perry was referring to, as I had sent an email out to the council several weeks ago, and the thinking at that time was that both would be portable between the time I sent the email and the preparation of the agenda packet. The thinking had changed on the camera that is proposed for East West.
That's what I guess from not reading when you send it out another time. All right. So marine gel batteries, are they throwing these away? Are they recharging them? I mean, wow, that's a lot of, that's a lot of batteries. So do we know? Are they recharging these batteries or are they chucking them?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're recharging them? All right.
And now I just want to confirm, because what I just heard just reversed what I thought
I'd heard a minute ago. The portable one that we see pictured is going on University Boulevard.
That's correct.
And the fixed is going on East West. Okay.
So let me just say, living close to this corner, because I live what would be, what would be like probably three blocks away, you can hear it from our house every day. You can hear, you can hear the accidents when they happen. You can hear the screeching, you can hear the honking. I don't have to be out there watching it to know. And it filters all the way up into the area along Ethan Allen, between New Hampshire and Elm Avenue, as they get into the fights. And then want to go around the bus into oncoming traffic, because there's a bus stop there at Elm Avenue.
And Chief, do I remember you saying, when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, that the East West Highway location had the highest violation rate of anything the company had seen?
Yeah. It's actually probably, it is actually more from the survey than we had on New Hampshire Avenue. And obviously, with repaving of New Hampshire Avenue now, we have our concerns again. Because I will tell you, during the construction, you would think it would slow down. It slowed down during the day, but at night, regardless of how the road is, and I think everyone's been over, through the diff, it's right where it was. We continue to have problems there late at night. But the good thing is, we have reduced accidents, so it is working.
Okay.
We had a fatality on New Hampshire Avenue at Sligo Creek Parkway since we put in the cameras?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Robinson.
If I heard you correctly, Chief, the University Boulevard location, it's like almost a tenth, now you're a tenth of the violation rate, let's say, of the New Hampshire Avenue one. It's down in the 3% range of the vehicles who are crossing.
It meets the criteria that we've looked at when we recommended the two cameras previously, locations. So it does meet our criteria. And because of the high pedestrian traffic there-
That's what I wanted to have you touch on. There's a pedestrian traffic across University there?
Oh, yeah.
Is that legal or illegal, a pedestrian?
Well, it's illegal in most of those areas, and that's been the problem since day one. But there are crosswalks further down, but a lot of people don't walk all the way down to the crosswalks.
Has there been any call to put more crosswalks along there? I understand it's a state highway, but-
I think they've upgraded them, obviously, with all the good work they did on University and New Hampshire. They put up the fences, which do work. A lot of the time, people still cross over them and climb over them, as you can guess. But it's still, because of all the different things that go along that corridor, people do cross against the traffic. So it's obviously still a concern.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Wright.
So I just want to make sure I have the fixed versus mobile. So we're putting the fixed camera where it looks like there's 180 to 200 violations an hour, if I do my math correctly.
Correct.
Which means that there is like three violations every minute, which is just insane to me. And we're putting the mobile camera where it looks like there's more like six to eight violations an hour.
Correct.
And so it makes sense that we, you know, we might, it might not work out as well, and we might be able to move it. If they do decide to move it somewhere else, we don't pay for that, right? It's not-
We don't, if we decide to move it to another location, then costs us-
Right. And the other question is, who's responsible if that unit does get vandalized, run over by a car, damaged because someone's peeved?
Contractor.
Contractor, okay.
No, we'll find the offenders and obviously prosecute them.
Right, right.
And we do try to provide security for our equipment.
Yes, yes, yeah. And is there any chance that we'd ever get a solar, do they have a solar-powered mobile unit? Is that something that they've, no, they, it takes too much power?
Probably not at that rate of violation.
Well, that one's low. The other one, no way. You'd have to have like a solar panel on the side.
Councilmember Schultz.
Just wanted to follow up on a comment that Councilmember Clay made with regard to the noise of traffic accidents. Since, at the intersection of East West and New Hampshire, my home backs up onto New Hampshire Avenue. I can see the traffic out my back windows. And I can tell you that those speed cameras that were installed on New Hampshire Avenue have made an incredible noticeable difference in the number of accidents that occur all along there, either at New Hampshire and Mulholland or Tacoma Park, or at New Hampshire and Erston, Glenside, and at New Hampshire and Sligo, because there was almost a virtual symphony of bended metal going on there for years. And that has greatly diminished. In fact, I rarely even hear it anymore. So there's no question of the safety issue, in case anybody has any doubts about that. But nevertheless, my next question's related, and that is, do we, is it customary for us to put a notice sign up that says "Speed Enforcement Zone Ahead" or whatever the standard sign is, so that people can at least, at least, well, let's turn that inside out, so that we can at least say, there's a sign there that warns you of speed and of automated speed enforcement?
It is actually a requirement of the law, Councilmember Schultz.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
We will also do-
Three weeks?
Three weeks of warnings, once they're up. We will make public notice, we will put it on the website. I will make an announcement when they're up and running to council, so it's on television. The same publicity we did with the other cameras. So people will have at least three weeks' notice. We were sending out warnings that they did get a warning ticket during that three weeks. So the public will have advanced notice on what's taking place. And there will be new signs, obviously, put up on those areas, on all the speed signs that there were photo enforcement.
Photo enforcement, that's the word I was thinking of. Thank you.
But this time, we won't get to start the warning period on April 4th, like we did on the other ones. Let's see, Councilmember Snipper?
I don't think I was-
I, they're lighting up multiple times.
All right. My question concerns the State Highway Administration approval. Is there any expectation this will take a long time? Or is it pretty quick to get it approved? I know they don't have money for anything, so I just hope they'll let us go forward with this.
We have to be in business between 30 and 60 days. I mean, we have to get through the state process, but it helps that our contractor is now the state contractor, so I think things will go a lot faster than they did the last time. The process, the process has been refined. When we, as, if you remember, when we discussed this last time, it went a lot quicker for us. It was a lot smoother, because we were able to learn. ACS has learned a lot. They are, we're one of their favored subjects these days, and they also now have the state contract, so I don't think it'll be, I think it'll be a quicker process. But Doug tells me 30 to 60 days. We should be in business.
Great. Councilmember Wright.
Two questions. One, is there a red light camera also at that intersection, or does the state highway ever install red light?
We have no red light cameras in the city.
Are we allowed to install red light cameras, or is that, and do we get the revenue from tickets associated with it?
We could do red light cameras. In talking to contractors and doing surveys, believe it or not, we don't meet the standards with any of our lights at this point. Believe it or not, no, we don't.
And do we have a, it doesn't really seem like it's in here. There's a cost number, but do we have an estimate on how much revenue, for example, the camera on East West Highway would generate? We didn't really-
We weren't focused on that.
No, I know we were, but I am-
You know, I think it's difficult to tell, Councilmember Wright, because obviously the goal of the program is to reduce the number of violations, I think, our experience as well as that of other jurisdictions, is once the cameras go in, you know, in a reasonable period of time, you can tend to see, hopefully, fall-offs in volumes of, you know, 25, 30%, if not more. I know Rockville, I believe, has had some cameras in place. They've been involved in the program longer than us.
And they've actually moved, took in new cameras now?
Yes, I think the violations fell so dramatically. So we have not run any revenue projections at this point, and I would not recommend amending the budget until we get a little history under our belt and see what happens.
I just ask, because I realize the main focus of the program is that you're trying to reduce violations, but I think very wisely, the state said that you had to use those for certain expenditures, including pedestrian safety. And the ability to put in sidewalks or do traffic coming also makes people safer, reduces accidents in other parts of the city, and keeps pedestrians safer. So that's, that's what I was curious.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, real quick, the name of the company is ACS. I'm a volunteer with Ed Venice Community Services. I'd just like to make clear that that's not the ACS we're talking about.
That is correct.
And city manager or clerk have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly share with the council sort of a, kind of a good segue from Councilmember Wright's comment of a few moments ago. I will be meeting with the staff later this week to review kind of what the plan is for this fiscal year for the expenditure of speed camera funds, as directed by the council in the, it was a resolution dealing with the traffic restrictions for Sligo Park Hills. The public works director has secured a proposal from one of the three engineering firms previously approved by the council to do work on the Maple Avenue study. We'll be entering into that agreement very shortly. Coincidentally enough, Councilmember Wright, you had brought up the issue of the lighted crosswalks in the city of Rockville. The chief had also, right around the same time, sent me some, directed me to a website that actually highlights the crosswalks you were referring to. I've shared them with members of the planning staff, as well as the public works staff. We're pretty excited about the possibilities. Most of the locations that the staff has identified, once again, would require approval of state highway. I'd asked the public works director to go ahead and kind of make those contacts. We don't have really solid numbers, but based on Rockville's experience, they're probably about $20,000 to $25,000. So part of what I will be discussing with the staff is what we expect we may, you know, expend on the Maple Avenue traffic study and any installation arising out of that. Actually, I'm sorry, it's probably Ritchie more than Maple. What we had on the table in terms of, you know, proposed sidewalk installations and ADA improvements. And I do think the lit sidewalks, kind of the Rockville model, offer some fairly exciting possibilities if we can get approval from the state, particularly in some of the locations, you know, along Carroll and things where we have a lot of concentration of schoolchildren kind of, kind of crossing state highways. So we'll be meeting later this week about that, and my hope is we'll have a pretty well-developed plan when the council comes off of recess in September.
Councilmember Clay.
It's really fun being the only woman on the council, I have to tell you. So I don't think it's been two years since I put this proposal together for Darrell to do lighted crosswalks at Ethan Allen and Elm, and three years before to do them along Sligo Creek Parkway at Heather and at Jackson. And we priced them at $30,000 at the time, is what we thought that they would cost. I think in the future, I'm going to ask Councilmember Wright to put forward any, any new suggestions that I have.
I'll put a few up for you.
Yeah? Okay, good. Thanks, guys.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comment on this single reading ordinance? Okay. Since this is a single reading ordinance, we need a roll call vote.
Have we moved an improvement? Somebody moved it.
I thought we did. We've done so many, I thought we did. Didn't we? Do you want to have it?
It's been a long time. Well, move.
Moved by Councilmember Robinson, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Okay. Will the court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanford.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll just note the items on it. Single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of equipment for multimedia computer lab. Resolution establishing a Tacoma Junction task force. A resolution amending city manager's employment contract. Resolution endorsing nomination of Ethan Allen Avenue gateway as a Maryland smart site. A resolution providing for appointments to the wild land use committee and COLTA. And a resolution supporting financing by the neighborhood business work program for the green commuter. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Moved by councilmember Snipper, seconded by councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, roll a call, roll a call. Sorry.
Mayor Wade.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanford.
Aye.
Aye.
We will take a short break and return for a work session discussion on policies and procedures for use of the auditorium.
In the last item on the agenda this evening is the discussion of proposed policies and procedures for use of the auditorium. Who's going to introduce that? I guess it's going to be the Director of Housing and Community Development, Ms. Day.
Good evening. When I was going through and putting together my thoughts for how to present this to you, I decided I would just give you a copy of my notes, which is a separate one there, hoping that I'm not mudding the waters by giving you something at the last minute. It's basically an effort to sort of consolidate all of the information that's included in the memorandum. So when I thought when I go through my presentation, there may be a little back and forth, but not a whole lot. Basically, what the council is being asked to do this evening is discuss some proposed policies and procedures regarding the use of this space. In preparation for this discussion, the city entered into an agreement with the Cultural Development Corporation, or CUDC, to conduct a survey of similar venues in the area, determine what their practices were in terms of both fee structures as well as the type of space that was available, and any other sort of operational issues that could be applied in this particular space. In addition to that, we've been meeting on an occasional basis with an ad hoc group of residents comprised from the community at large, as well as Recreation Committee and Art to New Mantis Commission, to sort of kick around some ideas in terms of things that would be appropriate to both program for the space, but then also to identify current policies or procedures that should be reviewed by the council and possibly changed to facilitate the use of this space, increase its marketability, and improve its access to the community. So this is sort of a consolidation of all of that activity. A copy of the CUDC report, as well as staff's comments on the report and their recommendations, are attached to the cover memo. I think the biggest thing to keep in mind is what the use of the facility, how the auditorium is designed, what are most appropriate uses for the space, and to recognize that not everything that people would like to hold in the auditorium is really a good fit. It could be because of the size of the audience, it's either too large or too small, or that the particular activity itself would be better suited in a different venue, either another room or a space that the city owns or operates, or at another venue in the immediate area. Some of the limitations we have are as far as its capacity. It seats 154, and then there's been a decision made regarding how loud it can get in here. So there's a 90-decibel limit, I believe. So things like battle of the bands, for example, where you plug in your guitar into the amp and you just blast the place up. This would not be the appropriate place for that because a decision is made internally from an operational standpoint, specifically the police, and then members of the Auditorium Committee have endorsed this, that it's not a good fit. And so we're focusing on smaller venues or smaller events, and things that do not require loud sounds to make them work. Does that make sense?
The loud what?
The loud sound. I'm sorry. Not a very good way to put it, but... And that it also needs to, there needs to be some demand for or requirement as far as audiovisual types of things. So for example, if someone were to propose to rent the space or use the space for a meeting that was anticipated to draw 15 people, and they didn't need a microphone, they didn't need lights or anything like that, the hydrangea room, for example, would be perhaps a better fit, rather than going through the auditorium, because there are costs associated whenever we use this space.
So I mean, if we only draw 15 people in the audience, we have to move to the hydrangea room?
You are special people, though.
You're on television.
What's your role? You're on television, the whole bit. And you are considered an appropriate use of that, as far as council meetings. Again, and I've got this on my cheat sheet, committee meetings that require AV or broadcasting capabilities, film is quite evident, performances, and then workshops, again, that have some audiovisual requirements. As Colleen was alluding to, we have rated these uses in terms of priority. So the highest priority is the City Council. And then in the event of an emergency and this space was required to, for the Police Department and other emergency management personnel to operate out of, this would be then a higher priority, perhaps, than the City Council meeting. So first priorities would be your monthly meetings, if you hold a public hearing, for example, like you have with the alcohol laws in Tacoma Park, or the public hearing that was held in conjunction with some of the traffic calming measures that were proposed up in the Ritchie Avenue neighborhood. Things like that, that have a broad community interest and that are part of the City Council's ongoing operations, would be a high priority.
Can I ask a question? What about if a event that wasn't deemed appropriate for the auditorium wasn't able to secure space in the hydrangea room, or the azalea room, or whatever room is appropriate, would they then be allowed to use the auditorium?
It would depend on why the auditorium was not felt to be a good fit.
You know, it was your 15-person meeting that didn't require audiovisual or anything.
But did that require any of the things that make Tacoma, or the auditorium space unique?
Right.
We would ask them to schedule for another evening, look at other venues in the immediate area. We run into that problem now in terms of scheduling conflicts, where someone has a meeting that they would like to, or a room that they would like to use, and the space is the best fit for them because of the size of the people that'll be participating.
So the feeling is it would be better to have this space empty than to be used by 15 people?
Correct. If there are no audiovisual requirements, yes.
And why is that?
Because there are costs associated with the auditorium, and there are demands for its space, and a decision has been made by the council, as I understand it, in terms of using the auditorium for the most appropriate fit.
What are the costs associated that would be different than the azalea room?
There are ongoing costs associated with just utilities, the AV requirements, maintaining the equipment that we have as far as replacement in the event. It becomes...
But those things don't change.
Cleaning and things like that.
Those things don't change if you have a community meeting in here of 15 people. I mean, you don't have audiovisual, you still have to maintain...
It's one of the policy decisions that the council is being asked to provide some guidance on this evening. This is what's been proposed, going through the Auditorium Committee, the city staff review, and the recommendations of CUDC. So this is what's proposed.
I guess, that's all I want to say is what you're proposing. I don't have to say I like it yet.
That's true, you don't. You know, if you did, I would consider myself fortunate and would do this. Other second priority things would be city managed programming, things that the Recreation Department, for example, is organized in, is offering to the community. Today, for example, they're doing a theater workshop, and this space was used for that. They do family movie nights, and this might be a good spot for that, as far as types of recreational programming that could be used or is appropriate for the auditorium. Second priority would be cultural programming that's offered by city committees or city groups. That would be the Art to New Mantis Commission, for example, we have our monthly poetry readings, and we would host them here. We've got readings that the library offers on a regular basis by various authors. That would be an appropriate cultural programming thing that would be identified as being a second priority. And then there's a proposal I'll go over in a moment or two, would be programs or events that are organized through the Cultural Events Coordinator. So kind of think of that as a year-long We Are Tacoma celebration, with programming similar to what was offered during the opening two weeks of the auditorium. So those would be second-tier, second-priority events. We would also include in that category city-hosted meetings or presentations. So for example, the film that Councilmember Wright highlighted in his council comments this evening regarding the Emergency Management Committee with their senior mediation film, that would be something that would be appropriate for this space. Town hall meetings, such as that that is being held by Councilmember Leventhal on Wednesday, I believe. And then other presentations by other public entities. For example, if there was going to be a public meeting on the Purple Line that S.H.A. or M.T.A., et cetera, wanted to host in partnership with the City Council, this would be, that would be considered a second priority event, if you will, for the auditorium. And then third priority would be rentals through nonprofits and others.
I'm sorry, could you just briefly say what the three priorities again are? I got that rentals is the last one, the person who are community...
The first priority would be City Council, official City Council meetings. Second priority would be city managed programming, and that includes the Recreation Department or other programming offered by...
Yeah, okay.
And then the third priority would be rentals to nonprofits and other individuals or entities.
It's not in your packet, it was the handout.
The extra handout that appeared during the break.
I see.
Did you get one?
Yeah, I don't see it here in front of me. It's probably sitting in the stack somewhere, but I'll look for it.
It wouldn't be in the stack.
It was on the top.
Would've been all by itself.
Sorry. The other thing that the council is being asked to consider in this discussion is hours of operation. Right now, the city ordinance specifically states that the building, for example, this space has to close at 10 o'clock on Monday through Friday, 6 o'clock on Saturday, and 2 o'clock on Sunday, and that there cannot be any activities or use of the space outside of those hours of operation. So we're suggesting that that be expanded to allow use of this auditorium outside of normal operating hours of operation. So for example, on weekends, we would recommend that the auditorium be available for use Monday through Thursday until 11 o'clock at night, even though the building closes at 9:30. And then on weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that it be available for use until midnight. It currently closes at 10 o'clock on Friday, 6 o'clock on Saturday, and is not open at all on Sunday. So that would be one of the things we would ask you to consider.
What was the times from Monday through Thursday?
Until 11 o'clock, and then until midnight on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Thank you.
Admission fees and sale of merchandise are currently prohibited. We would ask the council to consider allowing for individuals to charge admissions fees for events held here, and then to also either solicit donations in a fundraising type of activity, or to allow for the sale of merchandise, that could be CDs or books, T-shirts, other types of material that is associated with that particular event. The city ordinance also prohibits the consumption of alcoholic beverages on any public facilities. And while CUDC's report does not specifically make any recommendations one way or another, internally, city staff is not recommending that the current policy be changed. However, the Art to New Mantis Commission and the Auditorium Committee have resoundingly indicated their interest in the council pursuing this policy and allowing for the consumption of alcoholic beverages for certain events. There is a possibility, based on the information provided by one of the Auditorium Committee members, that there are one-day liquor licenses available, and that has been used in other venues. Montgomery College, for example, if someone is hosting an opening reception for a gallery exhibit, is required to get a one-day liquor license if they want to have wine at their reception, that kind of thing. So that's another policy decision that the council is being asked to make. Again, staff is not recommending that, but the committee members have encouraged you to give it some consideration. The other thing that we're proposing is a revamping of the fee structure. And in the interest of trying to keep this as simple as possible, if you could go to the last page of that additional information I distributed? There are three basic users of the space. One would be this council and any city managed programming, nonprofit organizations, and other rentals. What we're proposing, in recognition that the council has included within its FY11 budget revenues of $12,500 for the use of the auditorium, the fee structure that's outlined on this last page. For city managed programming, there would be no rental fee and no additional cost for staffing, and no insurance requirements for the use of the space. That would be things like the Recreation Department programming, library programming, events that are coordinated by the Cultural Events Coordinator, activities like that. They would be allowed to sell merchandise, but they would not be allowed to charge an admission fee. So if any of you were at the We Are Tacoma events, all those activities are provided free of charge to the community. There was no cost to the performer. Frankly, they all donated their services. But they were allowed to, on a special exemption, if you will, sell CDs if they wanted to. Nonprofit organizations that are registered with the IRS and have a 501(c)(3) status would be charged a basic fee, as we're proposing, of $90 per hour with a minimum rental of four hours. So that would, if you were a nonprofit, had your 501(c)(3) papers, you would be expected to pay $360 for the use of the space for four hours. If you wanted to use it for rehearsal purposes, there would be a suggested fee of $20 per hour. And then if you were to use the space outside of normal operating hours, and there were additional staffing requirements, we had to bring someone in to open the building up, handle the lights and the microphone, et cetera, there would be a fee for that. And then if there were any extraordinary demands for AV requirements, for example, one of the concerts that we held with the We Are Tacoma event, we had people at the soundboard and at the lightboard to coordinate all of that. They would also be required to do insurance. So if you're a nonprofit and you're booking it for one night or one event, it would be $90 an hour, four-hour minimum. You could rent the space for rehearsal purposes at a reduced fee, and you would have to pay for any staffing that was extraordinary or outside of normal operating hours. Because we'd like to encourage these types of organizations to use this space, and we want to provide some consistency within programming, we're proposing that that fee be reduced on a graduated scale for them to encourage series, like dance series or concert series or film series, those types of things, to take place in this space. And there has been a lot of interest in that type of activity. So I have listed on this last page examples of what the graduated fee schedule could be, as we are proposing. And again, there would be a four-hour minimum. With the nonprofit groups, again, they would be able to charge an admission fee, ask for donations if they were doing a fundraiser, or to sell merchandise associated with the event. The third tier of rental fees are, it's basically anyone and everyone else. We're looking at a basic hourly fee of $180 per hour with a minimum rental of four hours. This sort of falls within the mid-range of the research that was conducted by CUDC. There are other places with fewer amenities that are significantly less expensive. There are others that are larger in scale or have, basically larger in scale, that charge significantly higher fees than the 180. So this is sort of in the mid-range. We're also looking at a reduced rehearsal fee if they were to use the space to come in and sort of test things out, of $50 per hour. And again, the same would apply for them as far as staffing costs outside of normal operating hours, if there were special considerations, if there was something where we are anticipating extraordinary maintenance demands, or if there was security that was identified as being required or inappropriate for the event. One of the things that we have, that we recognize, is that there are a lot of very talented and skilled individuals in the community that can provide the specialized AV or technical services that staff is prepared to do with the soundboard, the lighting, et cetera. And what we're proposing is that... And what we're proposing is that an option be given to folks to select from a list of pre-approved vendors or individuals that they could contact directly to see if they would be willing to donate their services for that particular event, or to charge them for that service during that event. For example, during the We Are Tacoma series, there were two or three people that are recognized as having very high technical skills, and worked with Alvaro and the other communications staff to man the soundboard and the lighting board, and it worked out great. So there is a recognition that there are different ways of reducing some of the costs, but specifically with the staffing for the A V. There are other policies or operational procedures that are included in the C U D C report that basically we support on the staff level, and those are more how to take reservations, what kind of, how much advance notice should people be given, that type of thing. They're fairly standard operating procedures, and we support those, recognizing that things may be modified as we continue this process, and we learn more about what the demand is for the space and how things could work smoothly. The last thing I wanted to bring to your attention is, well, second to the last, is that we are recommending that many of the policies and procedures that are included in the ordinance be pulled out, excuse me, in the city code specifically, for example, when the facility may be used, and that that go into an administrative regulations document so that we can include more specific information about these various procedures and priority uses and things like that, that aren't necessarily appropriate to be included within the code. So that is one of the options. And then last but not least, on the back of the second page of what I handed out is, kind of the key to this whole proposal is the council's interest and the community's interest in being able to provide free cultural programming to the community, to be able to provide films, dance opportunities, opportunities to watch plays, hear an author read their book, have a discussion with a historian, things like that, that would be available free of charge. So what we're proposing to do is that the council consider the establishment of a cultural events coordinator position, very similar to what we have with the poet laureate or the exhibitions coordinator, who sort of is selected through this vetting process and assumes responsibility in exchange for a small stipend or honorarium for overseeing those types of events here in the auditorium. They would be, as we've got, have envisioned right now, is setting aside one or two nights, or one or two days or times a month, where We Are Tacoma-type programming would be available to the community and held in the auditorium. This particular individual would be responsible for soliciting programming with a focus on it being diverse, appealing to a variety of age groups, ethnicities, artistic interests, things like that, again, very similar to what we did with the We Are Tacoma, going through and selecting appropriate events from those proposals, scheduling events, coordinating their production needs, assisting in marketing the event or advertising the event, and then just being here when that particular event or program is being held. This is very similar to what the individual who oversees the exhibitions that we host here, or that we have here in the atrium gallery and in Gallery Three. And those types of programs would fall into that city managed programs category, and there would be no cost associated with the use of the space to the person doing the concert or the performance.
Some people have some questions. What I'd like to do is see if there are any general questions about maybe areas that weren't covered, or requests for something additional, and then I'd like to go through in order of what's on the blue sheet, in terms of the subject areas, and see if we can get through these, and see if there are areas that need a lot of discussion, some that don't need some, we can kind of go through there and try and get through this without going too late this evening. So first, do any of the people who had questions have anything that in general that kind of hasn't been covered yet before we go through the various areas? Councilmember Siemens.
Yeah, I feel like my comments are very general before we get into the subject areas. First of all, just so people understand where I'm coming from in my discussions tonight, I'd like to remind my colleagues and maybe you all along the council when these discussions first came up. But my suggestion was that what we needed to do in our old auditorium was, called it council chambers, was to knock down the dais and provide some space on the stage so that community members could come in and have performances, and the kids could put on plays and things like that. I was looking for something that was going to provide community space for community events, and that really morphed into something that's a very beautiful auditorium here that now what we're hearing about tonight seems to be more of a discussion of how do we run a business than how do we provide space for a community. And I think, you know, I think back today, this morning, I heard that the Maple Market down here on Maple Avenue is going out of business, is a convenience store, that for whatever reasons, they're going to be going out of business. And it struck me as I was listening to this presentation, and I thank you, there's obviously a lot of work gone into this. But it strikes me that we should next be thinking about where we could put a convenience store in the community center, because that's a real community need, and it's something we could maybe make a couple bucks on to help pay for things. I just, I had this feeling that we're serving the community in one way, but we're into a whole business realm rather than into just serving the community. So that's kind of my thinking, and I just wanted to do that as an introduction. And I love the space, I think it's beautiful, I love the idea that we can have some of these cultural events here, but I don't want to do it to the exclusion of, you know, just some community use that's at a price that's affordable to everybody in the community, and that provides programs where kids can come and learn things and do things. So that's my introduction, and let us get on to that.
And if I can just provide a brief follow-up to that, what struck me as Sarah was going through all of the areas was, I started thinking, okay, where do these Azalea Awards fit? And as you got to this last section in terms of talking about the cultural events coordinator, then I thought, well, that might be a place where the Azalea Awards fit as a community event, kind of a building of community. And it also struck me, as Councilmember Siemens was talking, that that might be an area where some things that you were thinking about, or that we were thinking about, could possibly fit. So I don't know whether, you know, that is the fit, whether people agree, we can talk about that, but I did have that thought.
I'd just also like to recognize that, you know, this is not in any way a critique of what the staff has put together here, because I would find it very difficult to sit on your end of the table and try to please the seven faces that are looking at you right now.
Did anybody else have any kind of general comments before we try and get through this list? Councilmember Ray.
I had similar questions as Bruce did about kind of Azalea Award and Film Fest. I kind of had an opposite reaction to Terry's. Having run a few businesses, I felt like that this was very far from a business approach, and that I thought there was actually, I'm not sure the balance has struck perfectly, but I thought there was a good balance struck between the auditorium being able to generate revenue when there was commercial interest in it, but also be available to nonprofits at a lower rate, and then also the cultural coordinator position I found very intriguing. And I think as long as that person isn't one who would say, okay, I'm going to come up with all the ideas for what's going to happen in the space, and program it out, and go out and reach out to people, and was more, had some of their ideas of their own, but also took ideas in from the community of, you know, people who wanted to put on a play, or host the Azalea Awards, or have the Tacoma Park Film Fest. I thought it could strike a nice balance, and that person could really help us determine which types of things are things that would be helpful and beneficial to the community overall, and have a cultural aspect, and which are the things where someone just wants a free meeting space, or a free performance space, and would really be able to strike that balance probably pretty well. So I think you struck the balance pretty well. I'm not sure if it's perfect yet, but I think it's, was quite good, is my kind of high-level comment. And maybe we'll get into this, I did have one specific about, I noticed that there's the idea, the recommendation, that there's deposit, a deposit for if you rent the space, but there's no suggested dollar amount, or I didn't see it, and so I wonder if that's also something I might touch on when we get to the specifics.
Okay. Councilmember Owens.
I'm impressed with the level of work that you've put into this, that's gone into this, and I'm really appreciating what I see here. And I had not thought of a single person that is sensitive to cultural events coordinator. What I had thought about before was something like a rec commission, or some group that would be the guiding hand for balancing all of these requests. But I think that it strikes me that a cultural events coordinator, a single person, makes a lot of sense. And I'm also, I'm thinking of specific things like the Tacoma Park Municipal Band, or the singers who feel they have a claim to the space in advance. Not that that's a good or a bad thing, there's a lot of history in that. And so I'm looking at this events coordinator in collaboration with the other groups, staff, and the commission, Arts Humanities Commission, and there would be a way to weave together a program going through the year that would accommodate those other, the groups that feel like they have a claim, or that feel like there's a history that puts them in here. So I'm thinking about the management aspect of it and how that would work. I think it's a good balance, it's like a three-part, the legislative, and executive, and judicial, you know, like you've got your city and your profit, nonprofit, and then there's the amorphous coordinator. Anyway, I'm intrigued, and I appreciate the effort that you've put into it so far.
Okay, so we want to see if we can, maybe I'll use the word zip through these different subject areas. And we'll start with the purpose and priority use of the auditorium. So maybe if we kind of look at the priority use listing on the first page of the supplemental materials from this evening, with the highest, second, and third, any questions or issues there? Councilmember Seaman.
I don't know where this sort of fits, but it did strike me a little bit. You indicated that you were, the staff were supportive of, I believe you said, 90 decibel limit for events.
That sound level was recommended by David Eisner, who is very familiar with the use of spaces about this size in terms of what makes sense from someone sitting in the audience, as well as just the types of energy and activity after the concert that might be generated by different sound levels? Does that make sense? But that was recommended by David Eisner.
Well, I think, I guess I feel there's some flexibility here, because you aren't necessarily going to know ahead of time what the decibel level is going to be.
I think the system is set so that it doesn't go above that, that it can be adjusted.
No, but that's perfectly fine, but you imagine somebody brings a band in here, and, you know, the system handles, I mean, I guess it's fine if the system won't go over 90, but the sound level might go over 90.
One of the things that we have to keep in mind when we're looking at programming this particular space is it's not like, I'm going to pick on the hydrangea room, because with hydrangea room, you know, you've got your capacity limit, you've got to make sure that there are enough chairs, and that the door opens and the lights work. When people come and look at this space, there are different questions that we'll be asking them, and interacting with them perhaps on a greater level in terms of being fully comfortable with the fact that they know what the expectations are, the capacities of the space are, as well as us knowing what their expectations are regarding the use of the facility, the use of the equipment, how that'll all work. So even with some of the We Are Tacoma conversations, there was a lot of give and take back and forth about what kind of mics, you know, how are you going to amp it, what sort of seating arrangements do you need, that type of thing. So there'll be frankly a lot more interaction with the people that are using this space, so that if someone did come in and their expectation was that heavy metal band that's going to blow up the sound system, it would be easier at that point during that conversation to identify whether or not that is an appropriate fit, or a good use of the, an appropriate use of the equipment in the space.
If I can just also put it back on that.
Let me try to get my question in, because I don't think I got my question in. Thank you. Which had more to do with having, as you indicated, a bit more flexible view of who we might have, because I can imagine you'd have a performance in here that included a loud period, you know, a play with guns that went off, kind of thing, you know, that kind of stuff, a historical play where they went boom, you know, and it's loud. So I think it's more appropriate the way you were outlining it, rather than trying to do some kind of limit to it, just clarifying. And I think you clarified it.
I'm clarifying my marks, as a way of illustrating what may or may not be appropriate for the use of this space.
Right.
And if I can just say, I mean, one of the things that we did, we've done some interesting testing to see what does the police department hear downstairs. I mean, some things might not be appropriate for what they could hear, but we were blasting some stuff and they didn't hear it. So I don't think that we're really going to have a significant problem with the sound level.
Yeah, and if I recall, when there was, I don't remember which event it was, but there was music, it was the, I think it was the opening night where there was, there was loud stuff going on in here, and there was music in the Azalea Room.
It was the steel drum band.
That's right.
Yeah.
This is when the jazz band.
There were three different activities going on at once, and the jazz band in the Azalea Room wasn't interfered with by what was going on in here, and what was going on in here.
I hear you're the police department.
Yeah, but what was going on in here didn't spill over into the Azalea Room.
Correct.
Or into the, I think there was a reception with something going on in the auditorium, in the atrium as well, and this one didn't spill over into that one.
Oh, that's right, that was the vague thing.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on the priorities? Councilmember Siemens.
Yes.
I said, yeah, just, let me just clarify. For this work session, for the rest of this time, don't use the lights, use hands. It's more interactive than those lights. I'm not going to deal with those lights in this.
My lights on. Do I have the floor?
Yes.
Thank you. I think the priorities are good. I think there's, one thing I'd like to see, though, and that is that the third priority there be a kind of a reserve for the third priority, so that it isn't, in other words, I don't think just the straight priorities work, because it could be that you would have enough interest in the building, and enough people who wanted to come in and use the space, that some of the local nonprofits or community users could be locked out because of a higher priority. of a higher priority uses. So I would like to think that we could set a, something, and I just pick a number arbitrarily, that one-third of the evening time would be priority use for nonprofits and others, just to ensure that they have a chance of getting something in the evening if the place is as popular as we hope it will be.
Councilmember Wright and then Councilmember Robinson.
I had a couple of questions around the sound. I'm just wondering how leaf blowers fit into that.
Well, if they had a leaf blower concert, it could be really interesting.
So some, I assume some of that decibel level is also kind of a control on the type of acts you want in here. So like someone could bring in their own amps and have like a really loud rock thing with a mosh pit and stuff, and that might not be the type of thing that this building could, this room could sustain, I guess, or wouldn't want to. I think it would be more helpful.
The mosh pit goes to the back entrance.
That's true, I guess. I think it would be helpful if we commit to keeping track, to Terry's point, keeping track of the different types of uses in a very easy way where we could get a report, because maybe Terry's concern should be dealt with upfront, or maybe we should just see how it plays out if we look at it over three months, six months, and then we see both, should be upfront, whether there actually is a problem, both from requests and what the uses end up being, then we might adjust and put it.
We would, we would recommend that not only for the, as a way of gauging, is the fee structure appropriate? Is whatever decision was made regarding consumption of alcohol on site, is that appropriate? Is this whole cultural events coordinator thing working out the way we think it will? Just in terms of tracking, because frankly, it is going to be necessary to go back and just revisit these things to make sure that what our, that our expectations were realistic in the beginning.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah. Not much to say on this, except that I think that one of the responsibilities then of the cultural events coordinator would be to report back to council and find that balance. I'm not for putting a strict one-third, one-third, because I think it just gets us into bean counting territory, which is not, which I think might be more trouble than it's worth. But I would like to hear back from the coordinator, whoever he or she is, and from staff, we'll need that reporting to see how things are going. I'm not one to micromanage on this.
Councilmember Schultz.
I have sort of a very fundamental question here that I'd like to get some clarification on, is how much of what's on this material that we're looking at here, the blue sheet and the supplemental material, is going to be part and parcel of our city code?
Oh, no, no.
And how much of it is just going to be administrative proposals for starting, at least getting this thing focused and started such that it'll be, can be easily modified from time to time as we see fit, without having to go back and pass new ordinances and amending the code. And I understand that, so you make recommendations with regard to possible alcohol use and things of that that might, and the hours of operation perhaps. I'm not sure exactly what would be put into the code and what wouldn't.
What we're proposing is that the code be amended so it's specifically stated that the use of this space and other public facilities be governed by administrative rules and regulations. Again, that gives you more flexibility in terms of modifying it to meet the needs of the community in the future, and it gives you a little more flexibility in terms of establishing rules and processes that are appropriate for the use.
Okay. I think that's.
Councilmember Robinson.
On that point, can you clarify the difference between if an administrative rule or a legislative rule or administrative procedure? I think I'm hearing you say that we would set general policy on the council and then you and staff would develop administrative regulations or rules of some sort which would dictate the other things that you've mentioned. Is that correct?
Correct. The council is, in the process, and Jesse, the city clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but the process is that the council has an opportunity to review those administrative rules and regulations and to can discuss them in a public hearing or some type of public setting if there are revisions that you individually as a group would like to see made. So for example, if we put down, or included within the regulations was that this particular space would be available for use until midnight on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and then learn something in the process of its being adopted or finalized, that Sunday night's probably not going to be a good night to have it until midnight. You can bring it back and we'll revise it. Is that correct?
Is it revised the same way as the code is revised? Or is it, how is it different then from revising the city code?
An administrative procedure is something that is developed by staff and there's a, notices published in the newsletter to give the public, there's an opportunity for public review and an opportunity to comment. And in addition, if the council is concerned about a regulation, there's a process for the council to hold a hearing on a regulation. But typically, the council doesn't get involved in the regulation itself in developing it. You have the opportunity to review it, but, and to make comments, but it would go forward unless you hold a hearing and decide to make changes to the regulation.
There's a whole process set up and we're notified when the draft regs are ready and we can look at them and if we decide that we want to get involved, we can, but there's opportunity for public comment as well.
So if staff wants to change the regs or the rules, they can at any time?
But it has to go through the same kind of, it does go through a whole notification process. One of the things about the admin regs is that it's almost harder than changing city code. However, it is more appropriate for the very detailed kinds of things that you would want to have in an operations.
My recollection is it's about a 90-day process?
It virtually is, right? With the notice in the newsletter, period for public comments, and then a notice of final action.
Well, this is confusing to me, because last summer, we, we put in place some legislation that has to do with parking in the city. And then there, there were administrative regs that were developed for the parking. And I thought that we, what was presented was that it would be far easier for you and the staff to change parking meters. But if that's, if that, as an example, if that level of detail is in the regs and if for the regs to change, it has to go through a big 90-day process, which is more cumbersome than the initial legislation was, then I don't see the advantage of the administrative regs.
With the, with the parking regulations, it establishes a process to go, that needs to be followed to establish individual parking meters or districts within the community. It doesn't specifically state, in this area, you'll be able to park for two hours, or in that area, you'll be able to park for an hour. It just goes through and it identifies the procedures that are, we have to follow to establish those districts.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I guess I'm hearing that the procedures for deciding what the rates would be, would be in the regs for this auditorium, but that the actual rates wouldn't be in the regs. Is that fair to say?
I'm trying to think.
I don't want us to get into a, into a big messy corner where we can't get out. That's all.
Right. I think what we have in the parking regulations for, as an example, is a fee or a rate established with an opportunity to review it on a regular basis and that that increase in fee would be incorporated in the budgeting process. So for example, it starts out the base fee, but then gives you an opportunity and establishes a procedure by which that fee may be increased or decreased. And with that, with the parking, we've tied it into the budgeting process. So when you go through and develop the budget for next year, that'll be part of the conversation.
Okay. And the reason we initially adopted a different parking structure was not to change the fees for the parking meters, but the timing on the parking meters. The whole, that came from, at least in large part, the ask to change 30-minute meters to hour meters. So is that also flexible in the parking regs and would then therefore translate into here, whether it's money or timing or what have you? Wouldn't be, it wouldn't be in the regs. Am I hearing that?
The regulations would establish the base expectations. In the parking meter thing, for example, establishes specific types of parking districts or parking zones that can be established with the permission of the city or with authorization of the city manager through this process. It doesn't specifically identify a one-hour parking zone on this street between these blocks.
That's where the flexibility.
And that's where the flexibility comes in.
Okay. So I guess I don't need to belabor this more than I already have, but I'm trying to make sure that what, what comes into the regs is more easily changed than having to come back before us.
That is our goal.
Pardon?
That is our goal.
That's the goal. Right. Good.
Did city clerk have something?
I just wanted to make one comment is that by doing some of these things by regulation, it keeps the council out of the weeds and keeps the council at the level of policy so that the fine details would be in the regulation, whereas you're setting the policy and all those little details would be in the regulation. Things that have budget implications would come before you as part of the budget process, but other than that, once the regulation is established, you wouldn't need to be dealing with those details.
Councilmember Schultz.
I guess what my concern is, is that since this is a new enterprise for all intents and purposes, and while I have a great deal of faith in the research that was done by the CUDC and the summary of all that and the opinion, you know, the opinions of staff here, I don't, we're still in a guessing mode as to what we think, say 501(c)(3)'s will be capable and willing to pay. And if we have like a cultural events coordinator or whoever's sort of overseeing this, I don't want to restrict that person to a situation where they say, well, this is the rate, it can't be changed without administrative hearings. You tie that person's hands so that they can't do any kind of negotiation, which might be more beneficial to both the city and the organization that's trying to do something. So we want to have structure here, but I, I'm just worried about, since we, this is a new enterprise, we don't have a history of experience with this, we're exercising our best judgment as to what will happen, but we can't be sure. And so in the early stages, infancy of this, I almost wish that we had a little bit, allow for some fungibility here, some room for negotiation, because there may be some 501(c)(3)'s that simply are, just don't have any money. I mean, that's not what they do. And, I mean, like the, take the crossroads Farmer's Market, it's basically broke all the time, and it's not, its purpose isn't to accumulate funds. And there may be other 501(c)(3)'s where some, just my point is that some exceptions might have to be made, or it would just make all the sense in the world to do so.
And I guess that was my point at the beginning when I was saying, gee, what about the Azalea Awards? The Tacoma Foundation is a 501(c)(3). So, you know, they wouldn't sit under the one area, but they might fit under the other area of the cultural events coordinator pulling together community stuff.
But they won't cost too much. All the choices have a fee that's higher than these small organizations can pay.
But the, there is no fee for those events pulled together under the community events coordinator.
That's an important distinction.
Yeah.
And that's the city managed program.
Right.
So the cultural events coordinator would be handling a good chunk of the city managed, some chunk of the city managed program, as well as whoever manages our time here and the rec department and other, and the library. So that person might be on an equal par with those entities. Is that fair to say?
But I guess then the question is, what's the, what's the criteria that the cultural events coordinator uses to select which ones make it, which ones don't?
How?
In other words, well, I'm saying that many of the events, you know, Farmer's Market might have an event in here that's not a cultural event, you know, does it have to be a cultural event? If it's a cultural event coordinator making the decision? I can see Impact Silver Spring wanting to have a community meeting here of tenants.
That falls under the, could fall under meetings of broad community interest. That's the highest priority. Yeah. That's what we're playing.
So I thought we were walking through this part by part, but I could comment on everything. So I'm just going to.
I was trying.
I was going to close this, I'm just, this explanation, I'm just going to sort of blow.
You're going to blow that out of the water.
Yeah. Well, but I'll try to be fast. So I agree with most of the recommendations that are made related to hours of operation, appropriate uses of the auditorium. I would, I would note that we have the recreation department listed as at the top of the second priority users, and they were pretty clear that they didn't want to be involved in programming the auditorium. So I just want to keep that in mind.
This would be for programs that they're organizing. So like the theater workshop that they're doing now, which is part of their own, their recreation program, is that it would be programming that they undertake or plan that would be appropriate for this.
So they would apply to participate like everybody else, but they wouldn't.
They would be in the queue, yeah.
I agree with admission fees and sale merchandise, that that should be lifted. I don't have an issue with consuming alcoholic beverages in the council chambers.
Especially during our meetings.
Especially during the meetings, especially when they're in containers that you can't tell what they are. Fee structure, I agree with your fee structure. I have a question about why nonprofits could get a discount on a bulk of, a series of rentals, and I wonder if, if the Institute of Musical Traditions just happens to be a 501(c)(3) that would have repeated rentals, is that right? But it's not offered under the commercial, and so we only show the repeats there. So that's one question I would have.
The sliding fee structure, if the council elected, could be applied to any of the categories?
I was just, I was just thinking it was for the, it was set on the nonprofits, but not on the others.
The focus of the RTMis Commission Auditorium Committee has been on nonprofit types of organizations, recognizing that there may not be the same revenue stream available. And that's the only really reason.
And I totally agree with the, what I hear is the, is the understanding of the staff around sort of insulating the council from sort of individual political lobbying for a particular group to be able to use the auditorium for a particular purpose. I think the city manager is much tougher than we are in that, so we're around the administrative regulations and have the council set the policy. That all sounds great. But I, I think where it's going to come down to it is though, is who gets to use the space for free. I mean, that's ultimately what it's, what the whole conversation is going to be about is who gets to use the space for free. You know, is the Azalea Awards something that's put on by a 501(c)(3) or is it an event of the Tacoma voice? And as far as I can tell, it's an event of the Tacoma voice that's moderated by the publisher of the Tacoma, the Tacoma voice. Is George Leventhal's activity that's about to happen in the council chambers, is that a town hall meeting for a, an elected official in Montgomery County, or is it an election event? And who's going to make those calls? Because it's not going to be us individually, and how are we going to sort of set them up and? And how are we going to sort of set them up and, and prep them for all of that and protect them from being harassed from us and from the people who want to use the space for free? How are we going to accommodate? My Girl Scout troop wants to come in and have a fundraiser where they put on an, an event. Whether it be, I guess it'll have to be a poetry event. I would prefer it be a rock band event, but apparently it's going to have to be a poetry event.
Probably a rock band event.
So, all right, so we get to have our rock band event, you know. And, you know, do they get to charge admission as a fundraiser? Do they have to pay the $390 to use the space? If the folk festival or the jazz fest or those groups, you know, wanted to use this as a fundraising space, how are we going to deal with that? Is that a cultural event? Is there an accommodation for that? Do they go to the bottom of the priority list so that if it's not being rented, you know, somebody could come in and use the facility for that? And I think that's more of the conversation that I think we really need to have.
Would anybody else like to run through their comments on the, on these various areas like Councilmember Clay did? I commend her for getting through the minutia and getting to the important part.
Cut to the chase.
And if anybody else wants to do that, so we can get a lot of, a lot of this approved or modified and, and then deal with the tough piece. And if we have to continue the tough piece, we will. And Councilmember Robinson made a joyous little face and waved his hand first, and then Councilmember Simmons.
Is Councilmember Rubin in here?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll keep it-
But she's no longer on the council.
I'll keep it, uh-
Are you keeping track of all this, Bruce, from what people, or are we going to go back and say, "Yeah, or hey, everything"? That's why we have to see for it.
We'll see. Get your comments out there.
I'm, I'm, I'm in charge.
It's the one way or the other.
I'm in favor of changing the curfew. I'm in favor of accepting admission fees. I'm in favor of allowing alcoholic beverages in some instances. And I'm in favor in general of the fee structure as proposed.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Sniper.
Wow, that was quick.
Yep, got to be ready.
I see that. I think that Councilmember Clay has outlined my main concern, which was around essentially who gets to use the thing for free? Are we on here? Yeah, I guess we're on.
Yeah, yeah, just as soon as we are.
We're just not always on. Who gets to use it for free? That's, that's going to be a big issue. And I, I think the definition of a nonprofit as recognized by 501(c)(3) is going to cause us some heartburn at some point, because I'm sure there'll be one that isn't, that drives us nuts, like a Girl Scout troop or something like that, just to pick one. I wonder about the four-hour minimum. I think this could cause us some heartburn also, because I think it's a bit too rigid. I can imagine an event where there are two, two-hour segments or something like that. And that might be a, a better way to do it. I, I think we're going to have to think about, the four-hour block is very convenient because you think seven to 11, and that's a nice block. But there will be, I can easily imagine at times when there'll be pieces, and people will be willing to buy pieces. And so one nonprofit will say, "I'll buy four hours and you buy, sub-buy, subcontract two hours for yours and two hours for yours." Have to figure out how to deal with those kinds of things. I also am a little bit concerned about the AV staffing options. I did like what you said, not what's printed here, which was that it included vendors who could be essentially volunteers, that is, people who are donating their services. Because I think that there will be people in the community who will get vetted by the staff of the city and should be allowed to provide those services for free if somebody can convince them to do it. Because I think a number of these, particularly for these series, it's pretty easy to imagine that you'd want somebody who, you know, ran the equipment for ten, for ten events rather than, you know, depending on city staff to do it.
If, if I can just-
Jump in there.
Yes, jump in there. On the, on the consent agenda item that we had this evening on the AV equipment, my reading of that was that one of the purposes was to have people, local kids trained in being able to manage a lot of this type of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things that we're looking at, already we train interns over time. We'd like to be able to get more that are trained to assist with a variety of AV or, you know, TV production items.
So that we would, as, as the, as that program is designed, we could potentially have an initial core of up to 20 people who might be available to be, you know, have, have gotten the training and we would be comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, one of the things, obviously though, that, that is, and one, one thing that we looked at when we were going through all these provisions is that we do have a special space here that does have some highly technical elements. We obviously want to keep it looking nice. And so it's, it is something that, you know, we wouldn't just have a middle school student be the staff person for the space. They may be an assistant as part of a, as part of a team. We'd love that. But just, we are recognizing that we do have some responsibility for keeping up and maintaining the space.
And the last thing I want to say is I do favor allowing alcohol as long as for appropriate, you know, cleaning deposits. Or maybe we'd make it, what is that?
It would be in the lobby. We wouldn't have it in-
White beverages or something like that. I don't know what, what do you call it? Have it in the lobby, okay. That's even better.
Yeah, nothing allowed in here.
Nothing allowed in here.
Except for us.
Of course.
Not even us.
Not even us? Okay, there you go. All right, I'm done.
Councilmember Simmons.
All right, I'll take my, my, this, again, I think I've said enough about the purpose and priorities. I, I think we need some more flexibility in what's there, but let's go through the other ones. The hours of operation, I'll agree with. The admission fees and sale of merchandise. I worry about the many community members who can't afford the types of rates that we see in here. I also think on, you know, those that we include under the city managed programming. I'm not sure why we wouldn't allow the sale of merchandise or require, request for donations from those. Again, we talked about maybe, you know, some of those nonprofits, you know, use the Farmer's Market as an example, just Councilmember Schultz mentioned, that it might be very nice for them to be able to hold a fundraiser. And I don't think that having to pay $360 to use a space for a fundraiser for the Farmer's Market would make much sense, so that they could, would be able to ask, solicit donations. It seems like there are groups like that, and I use that only as one example, many groups like that, that might want to use this space. And I, again, see no reason why we couldn't allow them to request donations or sell merchandise or charge a fee. And again, the, the fee structure I worry about in making this a community space. I see no benefit to consumption of alcoholic beverages at events here. Again, maybe, I just don't see a benefit to it. I don't see where they're going to a movie theater, why they would want to sell alcoholic beverages in lobby at a movie theater. I don't see the, the, the need to do that here. Again, I'm myself confused here. I got, okay, admission fees, and this is fee structure. I already commented on fee structure. I think that's the end of the list. I would rather not wait to, I guess I would encourage us to have a, a near-term review of things and maybe several milestones along the way over the first year to see how usage is and how things are going, so that we can make adjustments as the need arises.
And I'll weigh in real quick with any comments I've got on these areas. I'm happy with the hours of operation. I'm happy with the admission fees and sale of merchandise. I'm happy offering the opportunity for some sale of alcoholic beverages. I like the, the idea of the one-day license. I think that works. I can go with the fee structure and see how that goes. I like the idea of coming back and looking at this with some regularity, especially in the near term, as we get this going and see how things are working. Because we have the, you know, kind of the template from what C U C D looked at in other areas, but we have our own quirks here. And this facility will be different in some ways, and we'll just have to kind of fine tune it. I'm generally happy with the proposals that are put forward here, and I like the idea of the cultural events coordinator. And I agree with Councilmember Clay that we're just back to our same old issue of who gets, who gets kind of into, into the preferred umbrella and who gets the free use and who doesn't. And that's, you know, we come back to that every time and we kind of punt on it every time.
I would propose that it's free use for community and for commercial events, it's for pay and stick it to them.
Well.
I, I think we should rename the cultural events coordinator to cultural events czar.
I concur with the alcoholic beverage. I go along with others who think that's a good idea, particularly if you're fundraising. A little alcohol sometimes will help separate people from their money.
Yes. That's good. I like that.
I, with regard to the fee-
That's a Girl Scout meeting.
With the less fee struc, on the fee structure, I, I'm just concerned, sort of echoing, well, something that I brought up and that Terry has sort of commented on, Councilman Simmons. And that is, I just think, I don't know, I don't know what to say on it other, otherwise, other than to say that I think that we need to build in some room for negotiation, flex, or call it flexibility, if you will, so that we don't get away from our purposes here, which is to make this thing as available as we can to nonprofit organizations and other organizations that could really, really benefit from, from broadcasting exposure or, or just the, the niceness of this setting and the prestige that comes with using such, such a lovely space. I, I had a question that was alluded to earlier, whereas I can see, and you mentioned in this supplemental piece here where talk about town hall meetings held by elected officials. And my first glance, I thought, well, that's, that's fine. That would be great. Any, that would be an incentive for any elected official to want to use this. But, but then I begin to think, well, when you get into the political season, as somebody said here earlier, you know, the, the electioneering season, then, then I'm, then I'm beginning to think, well, then you need to be able to make it available to other candidates who also want an opportunity to have equal, you know, not equal time, but just to be able to use this for whatever gain they, they can get out of it. And so I think that's something that's going to bear some careful scrutiny as to how you draw the line there. Because there's, you know, it would be great to, you know, have any one of the county council members come, come here or, or a group of them to hold a panel discussion on a matter of concern to this part of Montgomery County or members of our state delegation. But on the other hand, we, I'd need, we need to be careful that this doesn't get into the campaign arena.
If, if I could just make a note, the meeting that's scheduled for this space later this week, they are paying for it because it is through the, their campaign office. So any, someone who is running for office would have to pay for the space. An elected official that was not running it through their campaign office, it would, it would be a different scenario.
You do see the dilemma, though.
I understand the dilemma completely. It is hard.
We, we do get this all the time. And I think one of the things that, you know, obviously we do have candidate debates here. That's something that would be, you know, highly desirable to have in a space. And we also very much want to have an Ike Leggett Town Hall, when it's not necessarily, he's, you know, just running for election or whatever, because that's an important way for residents to come in, in, in direct. It's always a tough call, although I think we're pretty clear when we talk with folks. And we, we can discern when something sounds like it's more electioneering or not. And I, you know, so I think, yes, we'll have a, we will have those tough calls, but I think we also know what to look for.
So we allow Democrats and not Republicans?
Except, except the cultural events supreme ruler.
And if I can just-
Can I finish?
And if I can just say that one possible demarcation line that can help in ascertaining what's going on with those can be the filing deadline for a political season. And, you know, I think July 2nd was the filing deadline for people who are running for office. And once you pass July 2nd, you have to assume it's campaign mode. And, and that could be, you know, noted somehow in whatever we set up, that, you know, once you enter that season, it's, it's kind of different.
Unless you might be able to make an exception, you invite all the candidates for a candidate forum, in which case-
Right, that is a different kind of activity.
Yeah. So, you know, that's the thing. Little of this, little of that. The other question I, I have, I wanted to comment, I think the cultural events coordinator proposal makes terrific sense. And I'm just curious, this is a question, if, if, without naming any names, if in the course of the various people, the Arts and Humanities Commission or others who've been looking and studying this thing for so long, any kind of, any candidates, without naming anybody, have come to people's minds as to who might be a person or persons that could fulfill that role? I'm just-
No, no one specifically. What we're looking at doing is, if this proposal is blessed by the council, is issuing a general call. And one of the thoughts I have is that we'd send it out to different institutions in the area that have as one of their degree programs an arts management administrator type to give, it would be a wonderful opportunity to give someone sort of the professional experience that they need to build up their resume and things like that. But there's been no one individual or a particular type of person or background that has been identified for this.
It's your wife, right?
Councilmember-
Was, is envisioned at the Arts and Humanities Commission, would it point that person? Would the council point that person?
What we have done with the Exhibitions Coordinator, for example, that's all, and I've got, I had laid out on the, on that extra material that I sent to you, is, it's all under the umbrella of the Arts and Humanities Commission.
Okay, so it, it sounds to me like with, in, in most of these areas, we have pretty, pretty general consent with some, a little bit more division in one or two areas. But it sounds like the hours of operation, the admission fees and sale of merchandise, the alcoholic beverages, and the fee structure and the idea for the, the cultural events coordinator, that we want to go forward with those. We, we're feeling a little less secure about kind of fee structure and who fits under what fee structure. Do people feel like we need to talk about those more? Do people feel like we need to get, say, "Okay, let's try this as presented with a, kind of a trial period and see how it goes and come back at a, at a time that makes some sense, like, I don't know, November or January or somewhere in that range, like six months from now"? You're, you're saying, are you saying a different timeframe? timeframe?
If you could push it back a little bit, that would be great, just because it's going to take a while to get everything.
Well, I was trying to think about was whether, whether this has any impact, I guess if it has an impact on the budget, it has an impact. You know, once we get into those discussions, maybe February, March, somewhere in there before April.
Yeah. That, I think that would be doable. And I, and I think that that would give enough time to pass so that you'd actually have some, a better sense of what may or may not be working.
And we kind of go forward saying we, we, we think we like how this is set up. There may be some tweaks that we have to make. And we know that there are going to be some questions about who qualifies for the free uses and who doesn't. Are we going to be able to figure those out now? Do we want to have more discussion this evening? Do you want to schedule another discussion about that particular aspect of it? Or do you want to, you know, kind of see how it goes? Councilmember Clay?
I just want to say that I actually favor using it to, to bring in revenue as a, as a preferred, a preferred method. I, ultimately, I think that the only way we're ever really going to effectively deal with it is actually to, to reduce the free uses. And the truth is, my Girl Scout troop can rent the cafeteria at Piney Branch for a lot cheaper. And it meets most of the needs that we have. And usually the Presbyterian Church lets us use their facility for free because we actually, we don't need, we don't need the lights and the AV and all those kinds of things. But I think as a, as a community, in our community center, we do need some income to help support the, the operations of the center. So for me, the first six months, I would, I would try to sell the space and see how much utilization we can get out of it. And then what we have, talk about what we have after that.
Councilmember Seaman.
I would move that we look into opening a convenience store.
Other comments? Councilmember Snapper.
I would add something to Colleen's thought. I favor focusing on bringing in revenue, too. But I, I think one barrier will be the four-hour minimum. And I would like to see some flexibility there. So that if two nonprofits, for example, said, we'll each do it for two hours, that that would be allowed rather than charging each of them a four-hour minimum. One uses it from, you know, five to seven and the other from, you know, eight to 11 or something like that. I just.
The four-hour minimum, just as a point of information, was established to allow for setup and tear down. So the reality is you're looking at a two-hour event with the, the space booked for the hour before and the hour after so that people can get in, get their stuff together and then pull it out at the end. I haven't had a lot of comments or concerns expressed about the four-hour minimum. And for the folks that I've chatted with that actually end up using spaces like this and booking them, it didn't seem to bother them at all in terms of it being an inappropriate requirement. I think they've had one or two comments, but that's the exception.
Yeah, I was thinking of the small nonprofits. That's what I was actually thinking.
And maybe I'll just take this opportunity to see if Jay Keller, who's sitting in the audience at this hour and who has been involved in some of these discussions with the Auditorium Committee, whether you've got any pearls of wisdom you want to share with us. Hanging tough gets rewarded.
I'm not sure any great pearls of wisdom. I mean, I think Sarah's done a great job with the staff setting this up. Within the Recreation Committee, there was a lot of discussion tonight about the flexibility for the costs and things like that, and how quickly changes could be made in case, you know, as a number of people said, this is a trial time for this to see what happens. And I think the great hope is, this place is just packed all the time and we're turning people away. And it's just a great event. But the concern is if it's not, if the fee structure is too high for some people and we start out and it's dark for a while, how fast can we change? And what's the flexibility that staff has to make those changes? So that's the one thing that we're just looking at. And I know a number of people said, well, would we get a report back and look at this in three months or six months? And I think the, the suggestion that the staff needs to keep careful track of how it's being used and what's happening with it is a really good one to be able to analyze that. So that's all I have.
Maybe with that in mind, we can think about coming back to this sometime after the first of the year. But we'll have a, maybe we'll, we'll schedule a little time to just kind of get a sense of how it's going. Are there any particular issues, any sticking points, anything that needs to be revisited in the interim? But think about that in terms of November. That, that way we can kind of see how it's going. Councilmember Ray.
I was just going to add.
Oh, okay.
Your suggestion.
So, so we'll pencil in a November, a kind of a early to mid-November check-in, how are things going? With the idea that it'll be a little bit fuller, look at it with a little bit more history sometime after the first of the year, getting into the February, March timeframe. And that everything goes forward as presented here. We'll see how things start out. Okay. A lot of hidden odds, yes?
Yes.
Good. We're charged.